Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call the meeting to order, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, and will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and then our pledge to the flag will be Commissioner Nipper.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for this opportunity that each one of us have been afforded. I ask that you be with each one of us tonight. Allow us to not only represent you well, but the constituents who have elected us to our positions. Allow our conversation to be honorable and that we treat each other with respect that we deserve and that they deserve as well as individuals. Again, give us wisdom tonight as we talk about some of these challenging decisions facing our county, and we'll give you all the glory. We ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kusch.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
President.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
President.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino. We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you. You have before you a copy, I believe, of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order and move that we dispense with the reading and that they be approved as presented.
And a second? Commissioner Nipper and others, as I see now. Did anyone else have any corrections or additions that they've identified? If not, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we have a resolution of recognition for our Rutherford County Correctional Officers. Commissioner Schaefer. Tonight, we have a resolution of recognition for our Work Center and Juvenile Detention Center Correctional Officers. Whereas Rutherford County is fortunate to have dedicated and committed correctional officers at the Adult Detention Center, the Correctional Work Center, and the Juvenile Detention Center, and whereas correctional officers put their lives on the line of duty each day while safeguarding and protecting more than 1,000 detained inmates in the county, and whereas correctional officers perform demanding jobs such as solving problems, communicating effectively, and counseling inmates, and whereas President Ronald Reagan designated correctional officers be recognized for their constant responsibilities during National Correctional Officers Week each year, the week of May 6th. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Mayor and County Commission that we hereby recognize and commend the Rutherford County Correctional Officers, especially during National Corrections Officers Week, May 6th through 12th, 2018, for their outstanding performance in caring for inmates while in custody at the three county facilities. Resolve this 12th day of April, 2018. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. A second for Mr. Phillips and Piercy and others, many. All right, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Very good. That's unanimous, and certainly that's well deserved. Let's see. Okay. Now, we have a time and an opportunity for public comments, and we have three people that wish to speak. I will remind those three people to come forward, give your name and address, and hold your comments to three minutes, if at all possible. So, our first person to speak is Danny Roberts.
Hi, my name is Danny Roberts. My address is 4128 Betty Ford Road, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and I wanted to address the commission tonight in regards to a proposal that I've heard about with regards to the landfill. From what I understand, you're considering allowing Republic to purchase the existing county landfill and potentially expanding Middle Point into that landfill. I think this is a decision that should be approached cautiously and not in haste. This is a decision that impacts not only our generation, but many generations to come. It's also a decision that should be made with full transparency. I've talked to several folks in the community, and there's little information out there that this is even being considered. There's been nothing that I've seen in papers, in the news. There's just word of mouth, which is, it seems like it's trying to be very quiet about it. There's many factors that play into this consideration. If Middle Point was to expand, you're going to have heavier traffic, because Republic's currently is having, I couldn't find the exact number. One report said 17, another report said 19 counties that are bringing trash into Middle Point today. It's over 100 trucks per day that go in and out of Middle Point, and if they expand, they're going to expand the number of counties. That means more trucks on our roads. I don't know if you've traveled Jefferson Pike, but it's not really a road that can handle tractor-trailer truck after tractor-trailer truck, and those drivers don't necessarily drive as safe as they should. Other than that, I would ask that if you don't live in the area, if you haven't visited the area, that you take some time, go out and look at the size that Middle Point is. It is a massive landfill. Not only the size of the landfill, but look at the property around the landfill that they excavated dirt off of to cover the trash that they put into the landfill. You're talking over hundreds of acres that's been destroyed in the northern Rutherford County by Middle Point. Also, I would suggest looking on Google Earth and looking at some of the aerial photographs, which may be out of date. I don't know the last time that Google has had pictures updated, but you can see the destruction around the landfill. And the last thing that I would ask is, a lot of the commissioners don't live in that area. You may live southern Rutherford County, so you don't see the landfill. It's out of sight, it's out of mind. So, when it comes time for you to make your vote on the landfill...
Sorry. Go ahead and finish your statement, that's okay.
I would like for you to think, what if that landfill was in my front yard? How would I vote if it was in my front yard? And that's my statement. Thank you.
Next is Jake Burkhalter. Mr. Burkhalter. Okay, I don't see Mr. Burkhalter coming forward. Jeremy Aber.
Dr. Jeremy Aber. I live at 3315 Yorkshire Court here in Murfreesboro. I am a somewhat recent transplant to this community. My wife and I moved here about five years ago. I teach at Middle Tennessee State University. I teach geospatial technology and the applications of that towards environmental and community issues. We've been, my wife and I have been here for about five years now. We love this community. We're very happy to be here. I'd like to extend it for another 50 years. We own a house in Murfreesboro, and we're extremely pleased with where we are. The problem is, I am very concerned about the future of solid waste and Middle Point landfill in Rutherford County. So, as you are all aware, Middle Point is approaching the end of its life, and I say the time is right now to make bold moves for the future of solid waste in this county. We need a long-term, sustainable solution that does not involve simply digging a larger hole for our trash. We need a solution that doesn't force future commissioners to deal with the same problem again in 10, 15, or 20 years. This community should be known for the positive aspects, the good schools, the beautiful landscape, the great work opportunity. We should not be known for having the largest pile of trash in the state. It's embarrassing, and it shows that we are not committed to being a modern, forward-looking community to have that in our backyard. I strongly support a move towards a zero-waste future where we heavily invest in recycling, composting, and mulching. By running our waste stream through these processes, we could reduce our solid waste by upwards of 90 percent. I've been paying attention to the solid waste situation in our community for some time now, and while attending public hearings over the last year, I keep hearing people saying that we can't afford to make these changes, and I think that's nonsense. We are one of the fastest-growing communities in the nation. If we can't afford to make investments in our utility infrastructure now, we'll never be able to afford to do that. When you take a true accounting of the cost of our landfill, doing this the right way is significantly cheaper over the long run, because we're not accounting for the environmental impacts, the public health impacts, the damage to homes near the landfill from blasting, the lowered property values of the people who live in the region. That cost far outweighs the cost of investing in treating our solid waste properly. I think you are all aware, or should be aware, of the concerns about pollution at the old county landfill. There should be a cautionary tale. If we just keep dumping our trash in the ground, we're going to have the same problem but 20, 30, 40 times worse, another few decades down the road. So, with all of this in mind, I strongly oppose the Middle Point 2.0 plan that was recently promoted by consultants we have brought in. I oppose letting Republic Services test at the old county landfill. They say they want to dig it up and do us a favor by cleaning it and dumping it in Middle Point. What that means is that Middle Point has to be expanded and made larger, and we have to let them continue dumping for 15, 20-plus years. You know, when does that end? How long are we going to put up with that? I'll finish up real quickly. I would say very quickly that I believe that the well-being of our community and the growth and the health of our community is more important than Republic Services' financial situation, and I would urge you to take this seriously now and oppose Middle Point 2.0 and oppose the testing at the landfill. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next on the agenda is Elections and Confirmations. Commissioner Turner.
Good evening, Commissioners. On your iPads, you should see a list of notaries that we need to approve tonight, and, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second, Commissioner Serrino and others. Does anyone have, anyone that needs to be added? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you.
Stirling, we'd like to also fill three vacancies and one alternate vacancy on the Equalization Board. Stirling, we'd like to nominate Mr. Greg Tucker, Mr. Delia Goodman, Travis Johnson, and the alternate, Mr. Dan Alcorn. And, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan and P. Any other discussion or nominations? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Stirling would like to announce a vacancy on the Emergency Communications District Board, and Stirling would also like to announce the appointment of Judicial Commissioner for Sharna, Jay Ship, and, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
I'd like to have a second. Commissioner Phillips. All of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Right, any opposed? Okay, now, we have a resolution to approve the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed that Consent Agenda. I find all of those items on that Consent Agenda appropriate and move that they be approved as presented.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Jordan and Ms. Ely. All right. Does anyone wish to have any of those items moved to the regular agenda? All right, seeing no one wishing to have any one of those eliminated, we will now, then, call the roll, please. Cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Okay, next, we will start on our reports by standing committees, and first, we have Budget, Finance, and Investment. Commissioner Jordan.
How was everybody this evening? Before we get started on this, I want everybody to realize today is a very important day. Today is Phil Dodd Day. Commissioner Dodd is 55 years old today, so happy birthday, Phil. Let the record reflect it for 10 seconds. It was officially Phil Dodd Day in Rutherford County. And now, we move on. Item K-1A. We've got a resolution for lease of postage machines and related general fund budget amendment. Whereas in January 2010, Rutherford County leased two postage meters, with one being located in the historic courthouse, and second being located in the county office building at 319 North Maple. And whereas 2012 lease is expiring, an additional postage machine is needed for the new judicial building. Whereas is being proposed to enter into a 60-month lease with Mail Finance Incorporated for three new NeoPost IN-700 postage meters with newer technology and greater capacities. And whereas the cost will be $886.85 per month through the NASPO contract. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a lease agreement with Mail Finance Incorporated, a copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as set forth herein at length verbatim, subject to the county attorney review, for three NeoPost IN-700 postage meters at a cost of $886.85 per month, for three machines for a 60-month period. In addition, the general fund be amended as follows. County Mayor, increase expenditures operating lease $1,110. Decrease expenditures building purchase $1,110. Resolve this 12th day of April, 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Ely. Any questions or discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
21 yes, motion passes.
The next four amendments are all health insurance-related, and if anybody has any questions, the very capable Ms. Stinson is in the audience to come answer. Item K-1B, Resolution. Whereas the health insurance plan changes were presented to the Risk Management Committee for consideration for the active employees and retiree plans, and whereas the Risk Management Committee recommendation was approved by the Budget, Finance, Investment Committee for consideration by the County Commission. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the schedules attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as set forth herein at length verbatim be adopted as the health insurance plan changes for the active employees and retirees effective dates as noted. Resolve this 12th day of April, 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Ms. Allen. Questions? Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dodd.
We have our Risk Manager Director come up and just walk us through the spreadsheet, if we could do that briefly.
Without objection, we will allow that. All right, so, Mrs. Street, I don't see you, but you're back there, I'm told.
I apologize, Melissa. I said Stinson. That was old-school there. My mistake.
And my question is rather generic, just are there increases to the employees? And just do a layman's walkthrough, please.
I want to see what you read.
You need to tell them that it's in sort of two pieces. This is the plan definition. You're going to get to the rates a little bit later. Okay, but go ahead.
Okay. So, right now, as the mayor indicated, we're only talking about plan changes, and I'll walk you through what those actual plan changes will be. Just one second here. This is only medical now, correct?
Medical plan design recommendations.
Yep. So, right, so we'll start with the deductible plan on the active employees. The recommendation is to discontinue, I'm sorry, the recommendation is to reduce the employer contribution to 82 percent for employee-only, and all other tiers to 80 percent. So, within that, right now, currently, county contribution is at 90 percent for employee-only within that plan, and it is at 83 percent for all other tiers. That would include employee plus spouse, employee plus child, and employee plus family. So, the recommendation on that particular plan is to reduce the employee-only contribution to 82 percent and all other tiers to 80. And that has to do with just the cost-sharing and the cost among that plan and what it is showing. Now, to answer a question that you've asked that is kind of preemptive, on that particular plan, it needs a 16 percent increase this year, and that is based on claims experience. On an aggregate basis, we need a 6.9 percent. We do experience rating on our medical, which means we look to see how much claims we have within each plan design, and within that, it will show that the deductible plan needs a 16 percent increase. To the total rate. Also, within that plan, there is a recommendation that we would, beginning on 7/1 of 2018, that plan would no longer be available to new employees. As an election option, it would only be the co-pay plan that would be available to them and the HRA for active employees. Anyone who is retiring on 6/30 or prior would have that option available to them if they're currently enrolled in the deductible plan. However, should they choose to leave that plan at any point, they would not be allowed to come back to that plan as a pre-65 retiree. Obviously, once they become Medicare age, they then go on the post-65, which is a Medicare Supplement Insurance Plan. Are there any other questions on the deductible plan? On the co-pay plan, the recommendation is to increase the in-network deductible to $1,250 individual, $2,500 family, and to reduce the employee contribution per schedule, which means that employee-only would stay at 90 percent, and the other three tiers would drop to 82 percent. With the ultimate goal that we will take a 1 percent increase each year till we reach 80 percent, as we have been for the last several years. And making those changes in the co-pay plan still puts us below what the state has in their plans, the way that they have their deductibles laid out and coinsurances. We do an evaluation annually to make sure that we remain competitive on that particular plan as well. And then, on the HRA plan, there's no changes to current plan design being recommended. On the pre-65s, I've already talked briefly about what the recommendation is in terms of those retiring on June 30th and prior. Anyone retiring on July 1st and after would have the Freedom Choice option available to them or the co-pay plan. The Freedom Choice is a stipend plan which puts money into an HRA account that they can use for premiums or other out-of-pocket costs associated with their medical care. Currently, that amount is $500 per month, and the recommendation was to increase the Freedom Choice stipend to $1,000 per month to make it more attractive to individuals. A lot of times, they can find insurance cheaper than that out in the marketplace. They may choose to go on their spouse's insurance. Once they turn Medicare age, then they will come back on within 30 days to the Rutherford County Post-65 plan and become a Medicare Supplement to them. And there was no recommended changes to the Post-65 plan, which is the Medicare Set.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions on the plan design? That's what we'll be talking about here first. If not, you might probably just stay nearby and see, did you put that motion on the floor, Mr., already? Yes, sir. All right, so we have that motion on the floor to accept the plan design recommendations that came from the Insurance Committee and went through Budget. Do you want to say something, Ms. Allen? That's what happened? Okay. Any further discussions? All of this, as important as it is, we're just going to do a roll call vote on every one of them to make it simpler and consistent, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item K-1C, Health Insurance Premium Rate.
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, Mr. Schaefer.
What's 6:28 right now. Public hearings at 6:30.
Yeah, and this, these are the rates, so that's maybe a good time for us to stop.
Stop now?
Yes, sir, let's stop right now, because we won't be able to do this in one minute, I don't think.
Sorry, Melissa, that's Runcor Dinner Plan.
He was helping to get out of here before we got into this other. So, we go back to public hearings. We do have two public hearings tonight, and the first one is rezoning request 18-A006. Applicant's Mr. Porfirio Alfaro, located at 6239 Burtonob Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density, and proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of about two acres. So, Mr. Demossi, you may tell us more about that.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. This first public hearing, as stated, is along Burtonob Road. This request, excuse me, comes as a result of his zoning enforcement action. The applicant would like to continue running a concrete business from the property. According to information submitted by the applicant, he'd be parking four trucks and have various equipment and material stored on the property. Approximately six employees would come to the property every day, Monday through Saturday. No operating hours were identified, and no concept plan was submitted with the application. The applicant did submit an aerial photograph with his application, which we did include with your agenda packets. Access to the property would continue to be from Burtonob Road. The business would continue to run out of the existing home. Should it be approved, however, they would have to submit an engineered site plan to show that they could comply with all the county's requirements in regards to parking, landscaping, drainage, those kind of things. When the applicant first inquired about the rezoning possibility of this property, staff advised him that this would not receive a favorable recommendation from staff. We did suggest the possibility of maybe a major home-based business, but even that would not be appropriate due to the scale of the applicant's operation. He would have to scale it down, and he would also have to live on the property, which he does not currently. So, we did recommend denial from a staff standpoint. The Planning Commission did have some questions regarding the location of the property along Burtonob Road, as well as how long the business had been in operation. Following these questions, the Planning Commission did recommend a unanimous denial, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? All right, then, that's in Commissioner Gooch's district, I believe. Do we have a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm way ahead of myself. I'm trying to get back on health insurance. Okay, sorry about that. All right, then, it's our responsibility to have a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak for or against this request now is your opportunity to come forward and make your statements. So, we'll declare the public hearing open. Does anyone wish to come forward and speak for or against this motion? All right, no one is rising to come forward, so the public hearing is closed. Now, is there a motion?
Yes, sir. Based upon the planning staff's comments and the vote from the Planning Commission, I'll move to deny this request.
And a second. Commissioner Phillips. Further discussion? All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then, the second item has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we're ready for the third item, a rezoning request 18-A008. Requester's Mr. Adravan Avraketh, and for the company named LandDevelopment.com. It's located along Walnut Grove Road. The existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is planned unit development. Proposed zoning is planned unit development for a residential subdivision on approximately eighty acres. Mr. Demosi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. The applicant's proposing to construct a one-hundred-lot subdivision on this -- there's two properties on the subject properties. According to information provided in the applicant's pattern book, of which there is a copy on your iPads, if you'd like to look at that for additional information, the minimum or the lot sizes would range anywhere from sixty-eight hundred square feet and up. House sizes would be starting at fourteen hundred square feet and up, with homes being constructed with a variety of materials, such as brick, stone, vinyl siding, cement board siding, et cetera, and would have at least three bedrooms. Again, I would refer you to the pattern book if you have specific or any other additional needs to see the product. This property will have access to Walnut Grove Road through the Clearview Acres subdivision, which is currently under development adjacent to this property. The pattern book does not call for any access to Stones River Lane, which is to the north of this development. They are showing stubouts to the east, which will tie into proposed access points in the to-be-developed Walnut Grove Farms development, along with two stub streets to the north. Currently, this development will not have access to Stones River Lane, but over time, we would anticipate, as development occurred, that if those properties to the north develop, we would see interconnectivity. So, that's something that we do like to see. Staff is comfortable with the design of this subdivision. Most of the discussion at the Planning Commission focused on the traffic in the area and possible traffic improvements to the intersection of Walnut Grove Road and Shelbyville Pike, US two-thirty-one, and the timing of those improvements. There was also discussion regarding the access to adjacent subdivisions, along with questions about protecting the wetlands on the property and drainage. There was also some discussions about sidewalks. The applicant did agree to place sidewalks in this development. I believe what they're proposing is sidewalks on one side of the street in this particular development. After discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. I will also say that the applicant's representative is present if you have more specific questions, but with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Demosi? All right, then. Thank you. So, now, we will have a public hearing here, and all of those that wish to speak for or against this application, it's your opportunity to come forward and make your statements. So, we will declare the public hearing open, and those that wish to speak may come forward, All right. No one is choosing to come forward, so the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on this request? Commissioner Reed.
I move for the approval with staff comments.
All right. Do we have a second? Mr. Gooch, further discussion? All right, then. All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. P.? Yes, sir. Mr. Demosi?
Would you mind making a statement about the one that was dropped from the agenda of the Vulcan?
Yes, sir.
Just to let people know that, you know, that's gone away.
Yes, sir. Yes, I'll be happy to. Thank you. We had a third public hearing scheduled for tonight, which was properly advertised for a property located along John Bragg Highway. It actually runs between John Bragg and Woodbury Pike. Vulcan Holdings was -- they were proposing to operate and build and operate another break-and-block distribution facility on the property. I just, I talked with the applicant back on Tuesday, and I called him about this application to ask him a couple of questions, and he informed me at that point that they had decided that they were no longer going to pursue the property. When they really got to look at it, they decided that it was just going to be too far out for their needs, add too much time and cost to the deliveries and whatnot. So, they withdrew the request. So, this item isn't an item that's going to come back. It's been completely withdrawn. So, yeah, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Jordan. We're ready for the health insurance premium rates for active employees and retirees effective January the first, two thousand and nineteen.
A one C. Whereas in an effort to generate sufficient revenue to cover the claims cost in Employee Insurance Fund, options were presented to the Risk Management Committee for consideration as the health insurance premium rates for the active employees and retirees effective January one, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas the Risk Management Committee recommendation was approved by the Budget Finance Investment Committee for consideration to the County Commission, therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the schedules attached hereto as Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as is set forth herein at length verbatim be adopted as the health insurance premium rates for the active employees and retirees effective January one, two thousand and nineteen, resolved this twelfth day of April, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a motion, a second, from Commissioner Allen and Mr. Nipper and Mr. Piercy, I believe, and others. All right. Now, time for discussion here. Do you choose again to allow Ms. Street to give you the detailed summary report of what these proposals are? All right. So, Mr. Dodd and others say yes. So, Mr. Jordan, we will allow Mrs. Street to give us a review of this.
My question specifically is placing impact on employees. Just to -- yeah. On the medical. Yeah. So, for the employees, to answer your question, Commissioner, the increase in the deductible plan represents a one percent increase, a sixteen percent for the -- I'm sorry. For the co-pay plan is one percent increase, a sixteen percent for the deductible plan, and an eight percent for the HRA. Again, we have the reduction in the county contribution with the tiers employee-plus-spouse, employee-plus-child, and employee-plus-family, reducing to eighty-two percent on the co-pay plan. Employee individual will remain at ninety percent. The deductible plan will have employee individual reduced from ninety percent to eighty-two percent, and eighty percent for all other tiers. And the HRA plan will have a hundred percent employee individual, employee-plus-spouse at ninety-five, employee-plus-child at ninety-six, and employee-plus-family at ninety-four. Under the deductible plan on an individual, yes, looking at this, the monthly increase due to decrease in contribution is eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. So...
Mr. Dodd, would you speak into your mic so that everyone can hear, and it'll...
Thank you. I didn't want to -- I thought that would be too assertive, so...
It's okay.
So, the county employee under the deductible plan will pay eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents more per month, and the county, the employer, will pay less, eighty-two less per month, correct?
Just related to the contribution. If you look at the spreadsheet, it says EE total monthly increase. So, on the deductible plan for the employee-only coverage, the increase will be ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents per month. Of that, you will see that eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents represents the reduction in county contribution.
And the reduction in county contribution is placed on the employee?
Yes, that's correct. The commission had voted several years ago to reduce the contributions at that time on a one-year percentage basis until we reach eighty percent on those three tiers.
Okay. This is an extenuation of that steady increase in employees or burden on the employee, less on the commission?
For the three tiers of employee-plus-spouse, child, and family. Now, on employee-only, that one is being reduced from ninety percent to eighty-two percent as a cost-sharing alternative. Whenever the plan was reviewed initially by the Risk Management Committee, there were multiple recommendations, one of which was to remove the plan because of the cost associated with the plan. So, as you're focusing on what the county contribution is on that plan, we do have in some instances employees enrolled in the deductible plan where our contribution as a county exceeds a hundred percent of their annual salary just for medical insurance. And by that, I mean you have a twenty-three-thousand-dollar employee, and we're paying over twenty-four-thousand dollars in medical match every year.
Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer?
Just a little, maybe, refresher for some of us on the eighty-two percent for the employee. It was ninety percent for everybody. It was several years ago. Most private enterprise plans are eighty-twenty, and that's what the commission voted, was to drop, to get this one down, which would be comparable to most of what goes on in this country, eighty for the employer and twenty for the employee.
Further questions? All right. Ms. Street, it appears they don't have any more questions at this moment. You still have some more for dental and visions. All right, then. We do have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
Adam K. One D. Dental rates effective January one, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas in order to ensure the solvency of the dental plan, the future claims of the plan have been estimated, and whereas increases of four percent in the plan premiums for the two thousand and nineteen year are needed. Whereas plan changes for the two thousand and nineteen year have been recommended by the various committees, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the premium rates and plan changes for the dental plan are adopted for the two thousand and nineteen calendar year according to the schedule attached hereto as Exhibit One and Exhibit Two, and incorporated hereby herein by reference as is set forth herein at length verbatim, resolved this twelfth day, April, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Mrs. Allen. Discussion questions? If there are none, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Adam K. One E. Vision rates effective January one, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas the premium rates per month for vision coverage for calendar year two thousand and nineteen to be one-hundred percent employee-paid are as followed with a six percent increase from the prior year. Twelve months, individual, two dollars, seven dollars and forty cents; ten months, eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Employee spouse, twelve months, fifteen fifty-four; ten months, eighteen sixty-five. Employee child, twelve months, thirteen seventy; ten months, sixteen forty-three. Employee family, twenty-one forty-seven, and ten months, twenty-five seventy-six. The ten-month is the teachers and the people at the Board of Education. They pay during the school year. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the vision coverage premium rates are adopted as outlined in the foregoing resolution for the two thousand and nineteen calendar year, resolved this twelfth day of April, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second, Ms. Allen. Discussion or questions here? If there are none, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
You?
Ms. Street goes back to her desk or to her seat. I'd just like to say how much this commissioner appreciates her and the Risk Management Committee and all the work they do. I don't mean to have blind faith in anybody, but having served about ten or twelve years in that committee, they put hours and hours into these scenarios and working out these rates and all, and I just personally appreciate what they do. It's a thankless job. Commissioner Allen serves on that committee now, and I just wanted to say kudos to them for the good work, and thank God it's not me doing it. Adam K. One F. Funding request for Eagleville School. Whereas there is no need to relocate, where there is a need to relocate the entrance to Eagleville School for Highway ninety-nine, and whereas proceeds from a previous bond issued remain in Educational Building Program Fund for projects that have been completed. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the entrance relocation at the cost of three hundred thousand dollars, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for the entrance relocation project at an estimated three hundred thousand dollars be authorized from the bond issue proceeds remaining in the Educational Building Program Fund, resolved this twelfth day of April, two thousand and eighteen. This is where the state has come in, decided our excess or egress is too close to the intersection. We've got to move it down. Not only do we not get along with City of Murfreesboro, sometime we're not getting along with the state right now. So, it's, that's why we're doing this. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Reed. Any questions or discussion? Right, then. All of you, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
We do not have reports for the Health and Education Committee, or the Property Management Committee, or the Public Safety Committee. So, therefore, we're ready to start with our Public Works and Planning Committee, and the first item on the agenda is a resolution to approve establishing a one-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee in the Planning Department for administrative approval of special exceptions for temporary uses.
We've got a resolution here, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the County Commission, in effect, to reduce the complexity of three hundred dollars cost of BZA special exception for temporary use approval, hereby establish a fee of one-hundred and fifty dollars in the Planning Department for administrative approval of special exceptions for temporary use, including, but not limited to, the temporary sales of food and merchandise and fireworks tents, resolved this twelfth day of April, two thousand and eighteen. I so move.
And a second from Mr. Piercy. Any discussion or questions about that? All right, then. All of you, and let's see here. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. So, that's all we have there, Mr. Jernigan, and then we have a couple of other items that we'll start on here. And the first one, as we had this discussion last time regarding the access agreement, there was a request made to have a presentation of the overview of what has taken place with this solid waste review and study. You also have, before you, one piece of paper that I think was placed on your tables that sort of gives you an outline of the many steps that have been taken since two thousand and thirteen through this discovery process. So, you may want to review that later or have even questions about that. But tonight, we're pleased to say that we brought in the, Mr. Harvey Gershman, who is the president of Gershman, Brickner &amp; Bratton, which has been the consulting firm that's been working with us on this development of this proposal and analysis of what we're going to be able to potentially do at some point. So, Mr. Gershman is going to make a presentation, and when he gets through with that presentation, or you may want to interrupt him, but you'll have an opportunity to ask him for questions and clarifications. Mr. Gershman, you may proceed. Do you have all your equipment there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, people in the audience, my name's Harvey Gershman, and I'm president of Gershman, Brickner &amp; Bratton. I'm pleased to be here tonight to explain the work that's been done over about the last year and a half and the recommendations that came from that effort. Going to give you a little bit of background on who the advisor team is, the talk about the feasibility study that was conducted, and talk through what was done during that study, focusing on the work done at the workshops by the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, talk about a solid waste authority, some thoughts on the access agreement that you're considering, and open for questions. And if you want to interrupt me, I'm okay with that. To ask a question as I go through this, feel free. My firm has been in business since nineteen eighty, and we've been advising people all across the country and a little bit around the world in helping them make decisions about what to do with their garbage. It's been a very exciting time for us doing this. We've worked in a lot of places, doing technical reviews, economic feasibility studies... We've worked in a lot of places, doing technical reviews, economic feasibility studies, procurements, setting up new collection services for recycling, recycling facilities, composting facilities, waste energy facilities, as well as landfills. Our experience is pretty broad, and we're an independent consultancy. Two projects I want to highlight for you, just to help establish our credibility, if you will. We're the only consultant firm selected by a federal judge to be a receiver for a solid waste system that was out of regulatory compliance in our U.S. territory of Guam. We've been doing this for 10 years, helping them fix that system, to make it a more sustainable system, build a new landfill, close an old dump that started in World War II by the Japanese, and implement recycling and efficient collection service, and have everybody paying for their services as well. It's come a long way. We started with being responsible for 90 or so employees, and made it more efficient. We have about 56 employees providing the services through that system. We also were involved nearby in Nashville, helping close the old thermal plant. I think that saying thermal, even now, in 2018 after it was closed in 2002, people still remember thermal. We were put in charge of coming up with options for thermal, and we helped Mayor Purcell implement the Kirby Recycling Program, as well as implement a new district energy system there that reliably serves downtown for now over a decade. We have a team of people working on this. It's not just GBB. Your local engineering firm, Triad, is supporting us. They know landfill engineering, so we're tapping their knowledge. We have a communications firm, also out of Nashville, called Cooley Public Strategies, helping us with the communications. I'm not going to bore you too much about my background. Oh, this isn't been... Excuse me. Let me catch up. This isn't working too well. Think forward would be the arrow. All right. I won't bore you too much about myself, but I got interested in garbage because of the first Earth Day, Earth Day 1970. I'm a mechanical engineer, taken some courses in business and management, but I've been basically focused my professional career in helping plan and implement better solutions. There's a slide on Jeff Postel, the engineer that's been helping us on the landfill issues, some information about Dave Cooley, the lead for Cooley Public Strategies. And we have a team of other people... Why doesn't this go the right way? From all the firms that support the process. So it's not just me doing the analysis, there's a lot of people that have been working for you to come up with this work and support this work. All right, the feasibility study. We first learned about your issue at a conference in November 2016, I think it was, Renewable Energy from Waste Conference. And we responded to a procurement to do this feasibility study. You established a working group, made up of people from both the city, the county, and the city, that we have been reporting to. The feasibility study had... Had five, has five tasks in it, the first four of which we've been doing. The focus has been on task two, the workshops and developing the knowledge of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee through the workshops, and having them come forward with recommendations, and leading to the development of the strategic plan, or what we ended up calling the development plan. As I mentioned, we responded to a procurement, were awarded a contract in May of 2016. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee was created, and the first workshops were held in December 2016, the second one February 2017, and then a year later in February 2018. The Solid Waste Advisory Group made two recommendations out of this work, recommending the creation of a county-based authority to move forward with a future system, and recommending the access agreement to find out what would be involved in the consolidation of the county's landfill that is at a point of closure, and consolidating it with the existing Middle Point 2 landfill, to collect information so they could further advance their proposal to do this. This is a listing of the committee members. It was designed by the working group and the mayors to have a broad coverage of throughout the county, elected officials, as well as people that had knowledge of the community of solid waste, to learn about the waste situation here and the options that are possible. The first workshop focused on background information. You know, what is the situation here? You heard comments about the extent of the traffic at the landfill, the life of the landfill. All this information was presented and shared, the costs, the existing costs that the county bears, the City of Murfreesboro, other cities. This was all presented so the existing situation, as well as the existing host community agreements with Republic, were understood, and those economics were understood as well. We also provided information about different choices that people have when confronted with solid waste decisions. I don't want to go over where you are now, but basically this is a community that has had the luxury of a very sweet deal, you know, for disposing of its waste. And very little recycling that goes on, different from how other communities around the country, what they're doing, as well as how they're organized to have a more sustainable system that can reduce, reuse, recycle, compost, build a waste energy plant if that's your decision, as well as have provisions for disposing of what's left. Because there's always something left, even after you do a lot with your waste stream, besides just put it out at the curb for collection and disposal in a landfill. So we reviewed all of that, provided background information. The committee and the working group went to look at some facilities in the region, so they could see how others are, what others are doing, what others are thinking about. This provided them a good context of some of the developments that are out there, emerging technology, as well as good practices. Now Workshop 2 is, was focused more on describing what the options would be, what the choices are to consider, given your situation, what technical and management approaches, what organizational approaches, what the combinations of them would be, what, you know, and talk more about what others have done, how they've been organized, what their systems look like, and what they cost. The organizational possibilities are, you know, are different. People make different decisions on how to organize for dealing with solid waste in the future. The more extensive you want the system to be, the more organized you have to be to run it like a business. Need to figure out how to pay for the system, if you're going to build transfer stations, a waste energy facility, a recycling facility, buy thousands of carts for recycling, that all costs money. Special trucks to collect the recyclables, this all costs money, millions of dollars. How are they going to be paid for? Is it going to be long-term debt? If it's debt, do you want to keep it off balance sheet from the county's debt and do a project financing? How could that be structured? So all these kinds of things need to be thought about and considered, so you have not just a sustainable physical system, but a sustainable financial system. During Workshop 2, we asked the members for some of their opinions on different parts of this, you know, the kinds of things that the system would do. What's interesting is, we gave each member three votes to make. They could cast all three votes on one thing, or they could have a vote, you know, one vote on three things. And we tallied this up, and this is what they said. I'm going to read off the double-digit votes. I think you can see them on the slide. Source reduction, education and outreach, residential curbside recycling in the cities, waste energy, a new recycling facility in the county. Things that got nines included residential curbside recycling in the county, collection and composting of organics, one or more transfer stations in the county, expand Middle Point got nine votes also, and look at advanced conversion technologies as well. These are, if you will, the priorities of how to approach the solid waste situation from a technical management standpoint. This is giving me challenges here. We also did a survey, and the summary, we asked questions, and the answers are summarized here, that the system, whatever we go forward with, to address the disposal situation, potentially changing in 10 years, which was the new... When this effort started, the estimate of Middle Point closing was about five or six years, and then it became about 10 years. We've been using 10 years in this study as the current life of Middle Point closing. But whenever, whichever you would go forward with, the committee felt that recycling needs to be a very big and lead part of the program, and be as cost-effective as possible. Looking at, the next thing that was talked about was looking at waste energy and conversion technologies. As you'll see later, the cost for these technologies is very, very high. SWAC members generally favor disposal outside of the county, rather than continuing it in the county. SWAC members also concurred with increasing participation and funding for curbside recycling to be very, very important. Now from that workshop, almost a year went by till we had the next workshop, and, you know, there was, I think, a lot of, you know, thinking on the part of the working group and the mayors of the county and the city, and I don't want to speak for your mayor, and he can certainly, I know he certainly speaks for himself, but, you know, what do we really want to do? You know, what should we be recommending from this advisory committee, particularly because there's so much community resistance to continued use of Middle Point? You know, very real concerns over the impact that the landfills had on the community, and, you know, should that be part of the future picture? Anyway, time went on, and during that time, Republic came forward with a proposal of how to consolidate the two landfills in a way. We asked them for their ideas. We were interested to know what they were thinking about in terms of when this landfill closes, what should they do, or what possibilities? And this, the idea of consolidation came up during that time. And we discussed, tried to outline, they presented an outline of terms that's in the development plan of how they're thinking about a consolidation of the two landfills, recognizing the county's landfill is closing, and there's costs associated with closure and post-closure liability that are significant. And, you know, what would that concept look like? What would the new deal be? The new financial deal that they could offer, you know, different from the current financial deal that the county and the city have? Now, after a few back and forths, that term sheet is in the book, in the development plan, and it's still, it's a draft, nine binding, but the key thing in there for them to come forward with a final offer, they need to understand what's in the ground at the county landfill, and what they will have to deal with to clean it up. Yes, move the waste from an online cells that have a lot more potential to pollute, and put that material into line cells, the subtitle D landfill that Middle Point is, and the consolidation would also be. They need engineering, you know, data on what they would have to deal with before they could finalize their proposal. So we documented all this analysis, the opinions of the advisory committee, the options that they wanted us to look at. We developed this report, which is fairly substantial, and trying to present all this in a strategic manner. We analyzed what we thought the extra cost would be to the households in the county under these different approaches, under these different options. We're asked to do it on a dollar-per-household basis, and also on a gross dollar basis over 20 years. So you get a relative, an idea relatively of what the cost impacts might be. The plan, this is an outline in the plan, I'm not going to go through it, but it was sent to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee about a week before the third workshop, and it was also posted on a website that Cooley has put together called Renewal Rutherford, where information about this process has been posted. In fact, we just posted questions that were raised in the comment cards from Workshop 3 by people in the audience, that went online yesterday, actually, to address questions that people have been asking. And we then presented this plan, and now I'm going to go through a summary of Workshop 3. Workshop 3's purpose was to provide an overview of the organizational approaches and the technical management approaches. The consultant team was asked by the working group to make recommendations. As advisors, sometimes we're asked to make a recommendation, sometimes we're not asked to make a recommendation. In Nashville, we're asked to do the analysis and not make a recommendation. The mayor decided what he wanted to recommend and presented it. Here we were asked to make a recommendation. So we did. We did make recommendations that are represented in the draft development plan. So just to review the organizational options that we went through, no action, go it alone. That means just let things... That means just let things continue the way they are, which means when the landfill is full, the host community agreements would end, and you would need to make other arrangements for where your waste would go. Either, you know, have the trucks just drive until they find another facility, maybe build a transfer station to handle it, but it really just sort of continued the current situation. We looked to estimate where the waste would go, what that would cost, the cost for closure of the landfills, and that's what's projected in the no-action-go-it-alone.
Can I interrupt here just a minute, Mr. Gersham?
Sure.
Is no-action-go-it-alone not basically what all the other 16 to 18 municipalities that are hauling their garbage here are doing at this point in time?
The waste that's hauled here under contract, I don't know what else they're doing before they have what's left, but many of them have contracts either with Republic or they use a Republic transfer station to haul here. That's, that situation could be part of go-it-alone. It also is, is part of the option called maximum flexibility, where you would build transfer stations, at least two, to transfer waste efficiently out of the county to someone else's facility or to a waste energy facility.
Well, I was just trying to make a point that while you said just drive until you find a landfill, which sounds a little bit, I don't know.
Ridiculous.
Ridiculous, but that's exactly what all these other municipalities are doing. They're coming here now. They're driving here. They're just going to find somewhere else to drive to in the future.
Right.
If Middle Point were to go away.
If Middle Point were to go away, something else would have to serve them.
Not going to be the only one in this situation if Middle Point went away. All the other counties that are coming here will be in the exact same situation we would be in.
True. The organizational option of inter-local agreements refer to the city and the county getting together and deciding on doing something to handle its waste post-Middle Point or even before Middle Point closed. The Solid Waste Authority is forming, is the organizational option of forming an authority that would deal with this, having a separate board to, and staff, to work toward implementing a county-wide system that could serve the incorporated areas as well as the unincorporated areas with a system as described or developed by the authority along the lines that the advisory committee was suggesting. The Regional Solid Waste Authority was one more for the establishment of a large waste energy plant somewhere. For that technology to be cost-effective, you need to have a very large amount of waste. You don't have a very large amount, you don't have 3,000 tons a day of waste by yourself. You have less than 1,000 if you put it all together. So, you would need to be part of a regional group to do a large waste energy plant that, whose economics still would be pretty expensive. The, our recommendation on this was to have an authority set up to deal with trying to make something efficient, a system efficient, from collection through processing through conversion, if that became cost-effective, and to disposal, whether it was at Middle Point or at other disposal facilities outside the county, depending upon what was implemented. One of the advantages of doing this is to set up the finances such that the capital that's involved and the assets for this system, you could finance off balance sheet and keep off the county's books, and set up payment, payment for services in various ways directly with the municipalities as well as with ratepayers. Having a publicly-owned assets for transfer stations allows you to have the waste that's generated in the county go through the county system or the authority system so that you're getting as large of economy a scale as possible. The management options or the assets that would be in operation during the, for these four different approaches were estimated. There's some spreadsheets in the development plan that tries to estimate the cost differences, the revenue differences, excuse me, the cost differences or the savings changes, given the current situation for each of these four different management options. The chart on the left, the yellow bars, is a representation of the cost increase on a dollar-per-household per month basis. So, what this says is, over 20 years, over 20 years, this is an average cost analysis that the, a household would see about a $2 increase on the, you know, do-nothing option, about a $1 increase on the, on the Middle Point 2.0 option, a $3 increase on the maximum flexibility, which is transferring waste out of the county, and then a $7 per month increase for waste energy, a regional waste energy system. Now, these, this economic analysis does not include costs or charges for doing recycling. That wasn't included in these, in these forecasts. This was just the effect on the disposal side of things. And then, the blue bars over on the right represent just the total dollars of those different approaches over the 20 years. They're big numbers. That's why we were asked to boil it down to what a household, what the residence, residential properties would bear from those numbers. Our recommendation here-
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You refer to the increase, $2.83 on the, like, the maximum flex, increased to what?
Increased from what's being paid now.
$2.83 for what period of time?
This is the average dollar-per-household per month over 20 years, over 20 years, from 2018 to 2038.
Do you have a number reflecting what it's costing a household today in this county?
The information we've gleaned from a few data points that people are paying, 11 to 13, maybe in some places toward $20 per household per month for curbside service. This would be in addition to that.
Are those figures based in the city curbside?
No, they're just in talking with people that we've been circulating with, what they're paying at their homes for service. I don't recall what the Murphysboro, you know, equivalent cost is, but we have that data in the, in the report. But this is meant to be additional cost.
Okay.
Over and above what they're currently paying.
$2.83, is that average county-wide?
Yes, and just for the residential properties, we chopped the big number apart by pushing the commercial-valued properties to cover their portion, and took the valuations of the residential properties and a portion, the portion of the total amount to them in the dollar-per-household calculation. So, this is just the impact on the households.
County-wide?
County-wide, cities and county, all the households.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, that's $2 and something per month or 20-something dollars a year?
Correct.
In addition to that?
To whatever-
So, we're talking about 20-something dollars a month?
Yes. No, a year, a year.
About $20 million a month, we're talking about 20-something dollars.
This is in dollars per household per month.
So, if I'm paying $20 a month to get my garbage picked up?
Now.
Now, over this period of time, I'm going to pay $20 more-
Twenty-three. No, $23.
$23 more.
An extra $3 for that option.
$2.30 something cents per month.
We don't know, we don't know what will happen to the 20, you know, but we're saying that the extra cost for disposal will be in this range.
So, my cost, you don't see my cost quadrupling or something? You see it going up by 10% or so?
Correct, correct. Now, let me, let me add to, we didn't do this economic analysis. Recycling, you know, a lot of, a lot of material can be recycled. Recycling costs money. To add substantial recycling to your service, to the services the waste you put out of the curb get now, would raise your rates, would also raise your rates. We did not do that analysis. But we can say that if you do this throughout the whole county, for the whole county, it would be less expensive than if you just say to your hauler, "I'd like you to recycle my waste," and it's sort of on a volunteer basis. That gets very expensive, but if you do it efficiently, you can keep the cost down. But the cost for those services, recycling services, are much more than the disposal fees that we've included here in the estimates.
One quick question, Mr. Gersham. So, did, did the group, the Solid Waste Group ask you not to do that, or was that never part of the original plan that you were going to present related recycling? The reason I'm asking that was, based on the feedback from Workshop Two, curbside recycling was the number-one thing.
Correct.
So, why would we not ask to have that done?
Because this was focused on the disposal end, not on recycling.
Okay, so none of the-
Right. We didn't do, now, here's the thing on the recycling side. There's a lot of different organizational approaches you could take. Does the city of Murphysboro just add curbside? Do you, you know, what, do you require the haulers to add it? You know, the range of cost projections to make with that are very wide.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to-
And, no, but what the, what the advisory committee said is, if we, if an authority is formed, that should be a first order of business is coming up with an approach, an efficient approach to do recycling, you know, for all, in all the cities and county-wide.
That's what I was looking for a little bit, was I'm just trying to figure, if we're talking about a comprehensive plan, that has to be part of some sort of the discussion. I'm just trying to figure out, well, and I don't want to make an armchair quarterback call here either, I wasn't sitting on that committee, I'm just trying to figure out, when your recommender is saying it's very important, and clearly the Solid Waste Group together said that was important, I'm just surprised we didn't maybe add that to some of the conversation, even if it is a little bit of a separate topic, it just seems like that would be a natural part of, we don't want more garbage, so we want to encourage more recycling, why would we not add that to part of the discussion? That's kind of what I was getting at.
No, that's, that's a good point. I have a, I have a hard time making estimates for those services unless we can say, this is how we're going to do it. Is it, you know, piecemeal? Is it organized? Is it just the cities? And that's where, you know, we said we would focus on disposal, and that was the plan initially in going into the feasibility study. But we wanted to make sure that that desire, you know, was documented and expressed, and, you know, if the, if you go forward is included in how you go forward, because the less you have to dispose, you know, that's a more sustainable system. It may cost you more, but that becomes your decision that you want to do that.
Yeah, and that was, and again, like I said, I'm not trying to quarterback from the side, I just, it just seems for us as a commission body moving forward, and even the, you know, our constituents, that's a huge part of that conversation. I'm just a little bit surprised, as you just said, that it, you know, maybe we can look at that before we really are able to make some final decisions. I hate to, it's almost like when you hear, "Well, we got to pass the bill so you know what's in it." I don't want us to get to that point where we start paying a lot of fees to say, "Well, we got to do all this before we know how much recycling can save us," and maybe that's true, but I want to make sure we're doing our due diligence, not just to an adequate level, but an exceptional level when we're dealing with taxpayer dollars, so, thank you.
Let's just say, for example, we were able to really get a hold of our waste, and we reduced our waste by 99%. So, we got 1% of what we're putting now going to our landfill. What's that going to do to the other counties that really don't care and are shipping it here, kind of like downtown Nashville that you consult for? I think their plan is to put it on a truck and send it to Middle Point, which is basically what these other counties are doing, putting it on a truck and sending it to Rutherford County. So, what is the incentive for us if we're wanting to get waste off of our river, our drinking source of water, and to reduce this by going with an expanded landfill?
If you do a good job of recycling, you're creating additional capacity for, you know, waste to come in from other places as long as the landfill's open. That's true. Now, I'm going to give you a couple of data points on recycling, so you know, you know, we advise people on setting up, you know, recycling programs and facilities. So, recent procurement in Indiana for a city, Fort Wayne, Indiana, the curbside service part is about, I think it's about $3 or $4 per household per month for everyone in the city to get a big rolling cart for single-stream recycling, and that's their extra cost for that. Now, within that cost, the city signed a contract with a processor, a recycling facility that happened to be in the city already. Okay, they were there. It wasn't something, you don't have one here. You have to haul your recyclables to Nashville or to Huntsville. That's your closest facility. So, that's a, that's a asset that's needed here if you go into recycling. Generally, the service arrangements now for new Murfs are about $60, $70 per ton to process the recyclables, and then share the revenues that come from the sale of the recyclables. If you pay that processing fee and take the revenue share, the revenue sharing, the value of the curbside bin sorted and sold might be $100, $125 per ton now. So, at the end of the day, you could save money on the processing, but you have to pay money for the collection. Those are some of the economics that are out there on recycling. Now, if you say only 20% of the households are participating in that, that cost goes way up, and that was our problem in trying to estimate recycling, because we don't, we need to come up with the assumptions, and I think that comes from after you decide, if you're going to get organized differently to do this efficiently, then you can attack those numbers and see what those will cost. But that doesn't change the need to make a decision about what to do with your waste, you know, beyond the date of Middle Point currently closing. Again, which is now, our understanding is 10 years. It's not five or six years as when we started. Okay, can I, oh, you, go ahead, sir.
One more question, Harvey. In regards to this, these pricings, which we have to be careful about because they are an estimate and a crystal ball kind of look at this point, I want to make sure we're all understanding that these estimates are just for the additional services, right? They do not include the hardware, the land purchase, the transfer stations if we were doing Max Flex, is that correct?
We do have cost for transfer stations in there. We don't have cost for land. We didn't include cost for land, so this is incremental. Now, the, when we do an analysis like here, what's important is the relativity, you know, between the different options, not so much that one's $2 and one's $1, because, you know, we're, we're looking over 20 years. So, what, the value of these charts is the relativity, the relative increases between them. So, I'll just make that perspective. Then, you know, we also, you know, we recommended, I'm still on the recommendation slide, that you look into, you advance both the Max Flex and Middle Point 2.0. And they're not, you know, you could do both, or you could do one, you could do Max Flex. You need another, you need a transportation in the south if you're going to create a efficient system while Middle Point's still open. When Middle Point closes, you'll need one in the north to go somewhere, or a conversion technology facility or a waste energy facility. technology facility, or a waste energy facility. If the economics change, the economics of energy are, are not conducive to these facilities. You know, fortunately, fuel is pretty cheap. Natural gas, you know, is pretty cheap, and that's keeping down the cost of electricity. And that, those are the revenues that we're looking at for these plants. But some of the more sophisticated technologies that are doing anaerobic digestion, trying to convert the waste to diesel fuel or biofuel, right now have some attractive subsidies that make the economics attractive, but the technologies aren't totally proven as yet, so we're waiting for that to, to happen, and for companies to come forward who will guarantee their technology and their performance. And we recommended that pursuing both of these options at the same time would strengthen your position in trying to develop either one of them in terms of getting better pricing for Middle Point 2.0, or transfer and disposal to, to landfills in other counties. All right. I'm not gonna spend too much time on these schedules, we've got a couple of schedules different from when we started. There isn't as big a crisis with a schedule to get a new disposal system in place if Middle Point's gonna close in five years. We're now ten years, so there's a little more time. But I'm learning that you all are very thoughtful and like to do things deliberately, so this extra time, I think, is good to carefully think about, you know, how to go forward. The, the time pressure isn't as great as it, as it was. In our opinion, taking the next couple of years to get to be able to have at least one transfer station implemented would, would, would be good as a foundation for providing other services as well, other recycling services that could be implemented countywide through an authority that has all the cities participating as well as the county. All right. With that report, the committee, the group discussed it, and came up with two recommendations that were pretty much in parallel with our recommendations, at the same time stressing that, let's not forget about doing comprehensive recycling and other things as part of implementing this future system. So, that, those are the motions that were presented, and, which led to presenting the, how do you call it, the, the landfill, the investigation at the landfill, the access agreement. Just wanna mention, you can read these at your leisure, the benefits and challenges of an authority. Our staff put together some names for the authority for you to think about if this is a direction you're going, so it can give you some, some idea of, you know, having it, having it have a, a local name. And I wanna talk about the sampling at, at, at the county authority and why we think it's a good idea. I was out, Kate Vasquez and myself drove out to the landfill and drove around the community. It's not good, what we saw. We weren't, we, we were not happy with seeing one side of the road, nice asphalt, the other side of the road, tan with dirt, you know, dust piled up and, you know, from the mud that's left behind by the trucks. It's, and all that dust, you know, getting into the community. We didn't smell, we drove, drove around, and this was in February, so we didn't smell anything, you know, but there are things that landfills can do to be better neighbors. You know, you can't get away from the truck traffic, but the truck traffic can be cleaner, particularly when it leaves. Roads can be changed, if that's possible, I don't know if that's possible, but there's things that could be done to mitigate how that landfill operates into the future. With Middle Point 2.0, you have an opportunity, if this is an attractive business arrangement for Republic, and I don't know if it is yet, they don't know if it is yet, but if it is, you have an opportunity to change how that company operates there, and have it be more acceptable, if possible. And if it isn't, you don't do it. Then you have to put up with the existing operation that you're not happy with, that people aren't happy with, for another ten years, versus trying to see it change in a different way for twenty years, which is the projected life that, that they see out there. That becomes your choice, I can't make that choice for you, it's not appropriate, but I can point out the strategic differences between, you know, letting it close now and the opportunity they would like you to consider to keeping it open for another ten So, this wasn't presented at the, at the advisory committee, I thought about it after seeing the landfill operation, you know, listening to the questions and comments at the, at Workshop Three by, that came in on the comment cards, and also, you know, just looking at other land, I've visited a couple other landfills between then and now, and I think if you're interested to see if Middle Point 2.0 could work, you let the research, the engineering be done, to see what that means, and you form a committee to work with the working group, the authority, whoever it is, to come up with a plan for the next twenty years, if that's the amount of life, to see if that could be acceptable for you, rather than living with ten more years of not being happy and being impacted. You're being impacted, the people around that community are being impacted, and it can be less, but you need some leverage to make it less, in my opinion.
I have a question, Mr. Gersman, but you mentioned cleaning up the conditions there and there now. Now, I believe I heard last month it would take approximately two years before Middle Point would realize could be able to do all their testing and come back to us, leaving a proposal for...
No, it's not, it's not two years.
But, and what's, why is it in their best interest to enter into a new contract immediately? And if I was them, I would slow walk that, so they wouldn't have, I mean, we're in no position to force them to clean up the way they're doing business tomorrow. You know, we, we would have to work our way through this testing process, work out an agreement, and then sign the agreement, which could realistically, the wheels of justice turn fairly slowly, could realistically be in five years, end of the ten years, could it not? Or you'd have an opportunity to ask them to change the way they do business?
Sure, it could be five years, it's in their interest that it's not five years. They, it's not two years to do the testing, it's a, it's, it's a few months.
I'm gonna disagree with you, cause I think it is in their best interest, cause the farther they get us toward the deadline, the more desperate we're gonna become, and the less options we're gonna have. So if we wait two years, three years, five years to decide if this is gonna work or not, we're gonna paint ourselves in a corner, and we're not gonna have many options as we would otherwise. That's just my opinion, and the way, the way I see this, but, cause I don't see how we would get them to clean up their act any time in the short term.
That's the reason why, you know, parallel tracking the transfer station, the maximum flexibility, so you're positioned to go out and procure disposal capacity somewhere else, so you're not backed into a corner. That's why we're suggesting those two paths. And I think it's, it's more, it's two years to do the construction, that may be the data point. Once there's an agreement to consolidate and get the permitting and do the construction, that's the two-year estimate.
So we're gonna be, I'm looking back at your increased cost, it's one dollar and eight cent per month for Middle Point 2.0, but if we do the, the both with the transfer, we're gonna be somewhere between that number and a two eighty-three, we're gonna have to have a hybrid number in there.
Correct.
So the one oh eight number's not a realistic number, unless we just go all in and keep doing what we're doing currently and don't do anything else. Is that, is that a true assessment?
The, the Middle Point 2.0 is, that's that for that alone, and the Max Flex was for that alone. You saying there's a hybrid, I agree with, there's some number in between, if, if you did something in between. I agree with you.
Could I ask a quick, quick question if I, well, I don't know if it's quick or not, but...
Okay.
Question. At last month's meeting, I recalled years and years ago, twenty years ago, maybe more, where, I wanna say it was BFI back in those days...
It was BFI.
...may have been another management company.
Okay.
And the county approached BFI about emptying the landfill and putting it in their sanitary landfill, and then lining our old landfill and using that. The county, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't think that I am, approached BFI about doing that. BFI did some initial testing and decided that there's scary, scary, scary stuff in that landfill, and they wouldn't touch it with a ten-foot pole. I asked Mayor Burgess to look into that, and he has, and can't find that information. I don't think I dreamed it, okay?
Okay.
Let me ask you, what if we allowed the sampling to happen? And they came back with a similar conclusion. It's this scary, scary stuff in there, and we don't want anything to do with it. Would we, after all this information is out in the public, would we be liable from anyone, like at a state level or a federal level or anybody else, because they got a hold of some information that they wouldn't have if we allowed the sampling to happen? And then, we would be in a pickle or a...
This is a, this is a very good comment, and a, and a very good hypothetical to talk about. You have the responsibility for that landfill now, so what's in it now with or without drilling and learning? It's your responsibility. There's been a closure design and plan for dealing with that, which TDEC is okay with. If you drill down and find some other stuff, it gets, if, if somehow that makes that landfill turn into a superfund site, that would be a problem, probably. But, right now, the current closure plan doesn't require the waste to be dug up and evaluated the way that Republic wants to look at it. There's no, there's no requirement for that.
I'm not sure I got a yes or no answer.
Well, you...
If it were to be, become public...
There could be a potential risk, is, I guess, a summary of my answer. There could be a potential risk.
Mr. Gersman, right now, we're responsible for gas migration that's underway, and, and we don't know the solution, and we're responsible for any leach aid, and we're certainly pumping thousands of gallons of that, even today.
Right.
And there's no end in sight. We hadn't found it yet.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Burgess brought that up, he brought it up at last month's meeting about the leach aid problem we have at the county landfill. If that landfill was capped correctly, and I understand hasn't, hasn't an inch of it been capped correctly, would that not slow the leach aid process way down to a manageable?
Yeah, I, I'm not a landfill engineer, but my general knowledge of landfills is the answer is yes.
Thank you.
And the closure design would need to, you know, be structured according to TDEC's okay, to capture, or to close the landfill, which means keeping the water from, the rain from going through, and then whatever does leak out, capturing that. That should slow it down tremendously. Won't eliminate it, but it'll slow it down tremendously. Yes, sir?
I've got a question. I know, I know what you're talking about, so...
Republic, but in the middle Tennessee area, is Republic the only company operating? Do we have other companies that's dealing with land waste in the middle Tennessee?
Yes, there's a, in the, in the first briefing, there's a map of where the other landfills are, and companies will be looking for communities to cite new landfills as landfill capacity closes, and that's just something that happens. But there are other landfills in Tennessee, they're further away, and if, you know, if and when, or when and if Middle Point closes, either others will get more business, or another one or two will pop up, having made arrangements with the community to allow it to build one. That's what happens. Even, you know, you should all know that waste energy facilities require a landfill also. They reduce the volume, by volume ninety percent, but by weight, about seventy-five percent. People are doing some new processing of the ash residues to get all the metals out, to make aggregate, to reduce that, but right now, there's still a significant amount of material that comes from conversion technologies and waste energy plants that require disposal.
I have a question.
Yes.
If we made our minds up today that we wanted to be the greenest county in Tennessee, what would that recommendation look like?
Form an authority, and sign, have, have all the local governments sign up with the authority, and say, we want this authority to do A, B, C, D, and E. You know, reduce, reuse, recycle, strong education, make the contracting and the collection as efficient as possible. Everybody gets a single-stream cart, you build a new Murf somewhere, or you transfer the recyclables to other Murfs. I think if you had the whole county doing single-stream recycling, not just residential, but commercial, and the universities, you would have enough to support a Murf. It wouldn't be super cheap, but, cause you're on the small scale, but you would have enough for a modestly sized recycling facility. And build some composting, you know, operations, use it for soil amendment, and you still would have a lot of waste left over after you did all that. You'd probably have fifty percent of your waste stream to dispose of. So now you need to decide, what are you gonna do with that? Process it for fuel, dispose of it, build a waste energy plant? These become very expensive options, but that's possible. The thing is, you've gotta get organized to do these. If you stay unorganized the way you are, it, it won't happen. And that's where an authority comes in. And this has been the organizational approach that, when you look around the country, how they've done that. They, they've, they've organized themselves through authority structures to be able to focus on it, and develop inter-local agreements with the jurisdictions to participate in the different programs, and pay for it.
I know you, one of the benefits that you've shown of the authority is its autonomy, and I think, I, I speak for a lot of the commissioners, last month, when that was what was brought up, that was one of the things that gave us the greatest pause, was to have no checks and balances system, to allow an entity to make those decisions for the county, where we had no recourse to say, we don't wanna go in that direction. So, how, how would you address that?
The check and balances through the inter-local agreement, well, first, the check and balances, the rules under which the authority are set up, and who's in the, in the authority, who votes? You know, how many people from the county, how, you know, that, that's the first thing. But the second thing, and the most, I think the most powerful thing, is the inter-local agreement that's established, that says, this is what the authority's gonna do, this is how we will participate in. And when that's, that is done, it's there for a long time, and you don't have to revisit it. You just have to enjoy using the services, given that the services that are there are the ones that you want. So you have control at the beginning, and then you let it happen. You let it, you let it do its thing, guided by people, you know, from the county, from the cities, from the public, whoever you decide to be the authority board members, to, to provide that oversight and, and, and guidance.
So if we wanted to override their authority, is there any provision for that, or you're saying there could be if we built it into the inter-local?
You would do that, the authority board member would, could change the direction of the board, you could go and negotiate a change to your inter-local agreement, do it through that, that way. You're not, you know, totally giving someone, you know, the total control. You have, you, you have, you, you have a different kinda control. And there's a lot, the garbage, it gets very complicated, you know, when you, you wanna make the system sustainable, you want it to be cost-effective, and you want it to work, you know, day... you want it to be cost-effective, and you want it to work, you know, day in and day out. And from where you are, you have a lot of things to do, physically on the waste, but also organizationally to be able to change from where you are now under these, the host community agreements that have had you getting, you know, tremendous financial benefits, but large community impacts because so much waste from outside comes in. So that's the challenge.
Yeah, I just feel, I have a teenager, so I feel like I'm giving the keys to the car away, and I can't ever take the keys back, is what I feel like.
I'm sorry.
And I trust my teenager.
I've been there.
And most of the time, it works great for him to have his own keys.
I've been there, but I got to tell you, the kids are older now, and they're giving the keys back. So if we're good, you know, when we go through that, hopefully it comes back. So there's hope. Yes, sir.
Um, I'm not sure you're the one that can answer this, but do you know why there weren't more, you know, here's creation of a citizen community committee, but it seems to me that there should have been more citizen representation on this solid waste advisory committee. It seems like that almost everyone's associated some way or another with the government.
That's not my question.
Your question.
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that question.
Sir, I have one more question. Mayor Burgess, you might, you might be able to answer this. Along those lines a little bit, I know that at the last meeting I was able to attend in February, there was cards that were taken up with questions that could be asked or comments that were made. They were going to be posted on the Renewal Rutherford website. I never saw them.
Yeah, they were posted yesterday.
I thought they were, but in the meeting, they said 10 days later.
Yes, I said 10 days later because I thought we would be able to continue, but we had to get our contract updated, and that didn't happen.
Okay.
Until a couple of weeks ago.
That helps. I just wish we would have known that to review what, and I think that's what Commissioner Gurley was getting at. I think the vast majority of people there were citizens at that time making comments.
Yeah, we, there's a six, there's a six-page document on the website that got posted last night, yesterday, with the questions summarized and answered the best we can at this point.
Okay, I just, yeah, I'll look at it. I just wish it was up there sooner, that's all I was asking.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. I just, I feel bad for them because I know they were putting their comments up there, and we didn't get a chance to see them.
Well, I, I think, uh, in terms of the public's input, you know, you deciding on this access agreement is not the end, it's a start. And all that agreement is doing is allowing for information to be developed. Maybe we won't like what is found, or Republic won't like what is found, but we'll have more information about the county's landfill and what, if Middle Point 2.0 is, would pencil out as good as we are talking about. But I'm adding to that idea of the community to be involved in what that future agreement might look like as well, if that's a choice, an option you want to pursue and learn more about from beyond what we have so far from Republic.
We have any idea how many millions, and it is millions, that Republic or BFI, the predecessor, have made off of Middle Point?
No, the, if you read their, if you read their 10Ks, the internal rate of return on landfills might be 15% to 20%. Internal rate of return disclosures that they make in their financial reports, that's a general comment, not just on Republic, but on waste management.
In general on landfills.
For large landfills.
20% profitability?
Internal rate of return on their investment. That's what we read in their annual reports, in their, in their 10Ks.
Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. I'd just like to follow up once again with the sampling at the landfill. You're recommending that that process happen, happens so that the county, so that we will know, the citizens of the county will know what's in there. And let me just ask this question. We find out what's in there, okay? And then we decide not to process, go forward with an extended agreement with Republic. What do we do with that information that we have? What do we do with it at that point?
So we have this additional information, don't know what it is. We don't know what it is. I would think that we'd have to show it to TDEC and see if they'd require any changes in the closure design or post-closure care plans that are currently conceptualized for the landfill. And that would be, that would be new information for everyone to look at. And I don't know what would happen. You know, I don't know if that would change, you know, TDEC saying you need to do this instead, and the costs for closure go up or not. I don't know. But the purpose of, there is a closure plan now that's approved by TDEC, okay, for the landfill. And there's cost estimates that are included in this plan for doing that as well. I don't know if that would change if we had new information, but Republic wants to know what's there so they can understand the quantities they would have to move and what it is. And they're assuming it can move into a subtitle-D landfill cells in their current operations so that then they can build the new liner system and engineered landfill, you know, system for consolidating the two landfills.
Is there a downside, in your opinion? A downside, and what is that downside of conducting this sampling?
I don't have enough knowledge of the landfill to give you an opinion. I wish Jeff might, but, um, I don't know. There's got to be some downside, I just don't know how much or how to rate it. Because my knowledge of the landfill, I don't have knowledge, that kind of knowledge of the landfill.
But the upside would be that we would know what's there, and long-term, the citizens of the county would be able to close that landfill the right way.
If more information came that said it was batter stuff, pardon my English, and you, and TDEC said you need to do something more to protect the land, then you would be having to do something more, and you'd be protecting the land better than the current plan if batter stuff showed up and TDEC said you need a different plan.
Which, in your opinion, would benefit the citizens of the county long-term?
Oh, well, I still think doing the access agreement and getting that information is in your interests. And you've created another reason that we didn't think of in February.
Mr. Gersman, but it's not unrealistic that Allied goes out there, they dig, they find something that's not attractive at all. They document it with TDEC, they walk away, and all of a sudden, we've got a superfund site. It might be in a long-term best interest of the county, but we could have spent $100 million by digging all that garbage out and moving it in an expedited process. The TDEC is fine with the way we are today. We can potentially look at putting a synthetic cap on, keeping the water out of there. But if they bore down and find something, and all of a sudden, we're under the gun, and we're hauling that stuff to God knows where that took 30 years to get in there. I mean, we could open up a can of worms. It could cost us tens of millions, if not $100 million, to take that stuff to New Jersey.
And if you don't, if you don't find out, and there is really bad stuff there, and then it leaks into the groundwater and causes, you know, down the road, you know, more environmental health problems, that could be even worse than knowing what you got to deal with.
Sometime you're better off being in an ostrich and putting your head in the sand, in my opinion.
That becomes your choice, but I think that's, you know, and I don't know what the probability of that is.
I have a question. The closure plan that they say you have in place or can be put in place now, is it not the best closure for protection of our water source?
I would think so. I would think so, given known conditions of the site. That's how it is designed. Now, that, these are questions that I would turn to the landfill engineer to answer more than me. So I qualify my responses, reminding everyone, I'm not a landfill engineer. And you have one, and that's licensed in Tennessee, and that works with TDEC on these and others. And, you know, we're, uh, we've used his estimates based on the design that he's been working with the county and TDEC on for the landfill.
Back to the closure plan, it is certified with TDEC, and it's okay to do it?
I don't know if the word certify, I don't know exactly where, but, um, I'm of the belief that TDEC is aware of the design and is comfortable. I don't know if certified is a word I could put in. I don't know if it's formally approved, but they've been consulted. I don't know if that's something Mac Nolan, who's here, who may be here, might be able to comment better than me. I don't know the exact regulatory status.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that it's other companies in the Tennessee area. Do you think they would be interested in knowing what's in our landfill? Or, in other words, besides Republic? In other words, what I'm asking, if we do it ourselves and gather this data, do you think other companies would be interested besides Republic?
In taking over, to emptying out your landfill and buying it? And then making another landfill? The volume that's created, you've got, you know, I want you to think of two hills, okay? Next to each other. And the volume that's created is the volume in between the hills. And where the property line is right now, you have to have setbacks and then start your slopes. So another company coming in to take over the county landfill would not have the volumes available because they'd still have to have a property line and have a slope. So the volume advantage of the consolidation is that annular space between that would get filled and the hill, the county's smaller hill, being taken away and creating more space. So another company coming in would not be, it's not there. That's not there.
I have a question. I just wanted to ask you, I guess this is on the other side. As Republic does this study, is there a guarantee that we would receive full disclosure or what they find?
Yes, yes.
And then on the authority that we're talking about here, is this somewhat like creating a utility in a way?
Yes.
Is what we're totally talking about?
But it's a public, you know, not a private utility, a public utility.
Going that direction.
Right, under state, per the state, the state authority law.
I, uh, I was, you know, I heard you say there that y'all went out in February, you didn't smell anything. I, uh, I just questioned, did you have the windows down? I just.
We did.
Uh, because I was out there yesterday, and it was a real pretty sunny day, and I, and it wasn't even a wind blowing, and I had to keep moving. I had to, I had to tell you that.
Temperature yesterday was 75?
Maybe at that time of the morning. I was there around 10 o'clock, but.
February was 45.
But I live on the south side of the county, and I wanted to go out there and see for myself and see what those people are experiencing, and it's not good, and that's what I was thinking.
I, I hear you, and I respect that, and I believe that. And it, changes can be made. Changes can be made, and, uh, that, you know, you'd have leverage in talking about those changes and making those changes be part of the future system versus not. And if it's not acceptable, you don't do it. Okay, well, I thank you for your, any, another question?
I have a question for the mayor. Commissioner Phillips mentioned something that he remembers from 20 years ago. It would seem that 20 years ago is 98 or something like that. It would seem that if there were something like that, if there was some drilling or something, there should be some kind of record of that, or he thoroughly checked?
We did not do it, whoever it was at that time did those studies. Yes, we've heard that that took place. We have not been able to determine or find any indication or any records of, that they may have.
I will give you a reason why.
Gathered at that point.
I could give you a reason why BFI would say, "We're not interested." Middle Point hadn't been filled up that much yet, and they had plenty of volume, and they didn't need to think about taking over the county's operation for more volume.
Or they found something like Commissioner Phillips.
Or they found something, but, you know, 20 years ago, there was a lot more volume left than there is now. So there, you know, this company's perspective is what it is.
I, I know that prior to, say, the mid-'80s, we had very little record-keeping and so on, but by the mid-'90s, we were beginning to computerize stuff and keeps records and so on fairly well. I would just think that somewhere or another back only 20 years ago, that I can think 40 years ago maybe, but 20 years ago, somebody should know something.
Do you have any idea how much that core drilling test would cost if we decided to take it on ourselves instead of allowing another party to do it?
I'm trying to remember if a number was mentioned. I'm going to say it's, you know, more than 50, less than 100, somewhere in there. To do the, you know, I can get back to you and confirm that and give you an estimate. That's just my, you know, gut. I don't know exactly how many. And I don't, I don't remember if that was disclosed to us. I don't think it was what they were planning on spending. But it's an independent company that does drilling that would do it, and, uh, your counsel has made sure that the agreement gives us full access to the information. Otherwise, you know, we shouldn't do it, you shouldn't do it.
Well, and that was really part of my follow-up, which was, how do we verify the integrity of the report? Because I want to make sure that we're not being, the information is not being cherry-picked and only telling us what they want to tell us.
Okay. The, um, that's in the agreement, and we could have your engineer oversee or watch all the drilling and get copies of stuff. And, you know, if we wanted to really follow the trail, we could. But if an independent lab, you know, if they give, if they say they're going to give us all the data, they'll give us all the data. And if we have someone watch the activity, we'll know how many drills they made, where they made them, and we'll confirm that we've got a sampling from each location and each drilling made. It is on your property, so you'd be able to do that. So you're assured that you got all the information. You should want all the information, I believe. Okay. Mayor?
If there are no more questions, thank you very much. We do appreciate that. Okay, well, the next agenda item is, we've titled it, "Further Discussion Regarding Resolution to Approve Access Agreement with BFI Waste Systems of Tennessee." This was deferred from the March 15th commission meeting. So it was a motion that was on the floor in a second to accept the, uh, and allow the access agreement to be executed. So now is your opportunity to further discuss this or choose what you want to do.
Mayor Burgess?
Mr. Pearson?
I went to the trouble to read this report. I asked for a paper printout, read every page of it. There's a lot of good information in it. There's no information in it regarding the impact it will have on the economy. There's no information in it regarding the community. There's nothing to do with the ecosystem, the river. There's nothing in it about it. It's all more or less dollars and cents. It's a plan. Of course, the Middle Point 2.0 plan, I think is being pushed. The Max Flex plan might be better. That would be, have to be, have to be determined in a later date. Mr. Phillips brought up a very good point about the core drilling. Whatever is core-drilled, whoever does it will most likely have to be registered with TDEC. A lot of stuff is best left unknown. If we can cap that landfill and reduce the leach aid runoff of it down to a point where we can handle it, I think that would be the best issue, to not core-drill it at all, and for sure not let Republic core-drill it. A company that large is hard to trust. I'm not saying they're dishonest. I'm saying facts could be misplaced, numbers could be, could be. could be lost. If it's core drilled at all, we should do it. But I'm not recommending that we do it either. I've talked to some of the people that has worked at that county landfill, the longest that's still living. There's a lot of garbage in that landfill. They'll recommend you leave it alone. Cause they know what's in it. They know how it was put in it. Right now, I would say our best interest would be cap it like is required rather than take the chance of spending millions of dollars on facts that are found that we don't know about and we probably don't want to know about. I've come to this meeting tonight to make a motion, but I'm gonna wait till after we vote on this core drilling and hope that you keep the community of Walter Hill in the, in the best interest of your vote and the north part of the county. Cause it's more than just Walter Hill. It varies way on into the city. We already have two schools at Walter Hill. We have a middle and a, and a high school here at Segal. You can smell it bad there any day you want to. I drive a school bus to Segal Middle, Segal High twice a day. Smell it both times, every day, never fails. Of course, it's on the west. The wind blows it to the west, from the west. Our county system right now is presently looking for land in Walter Hill area to build a new middle school. There's five schools this will affect. That's a lot of children, a lot of liability. I meant to ask Mr. Mitchell, but I didn't ask him before the meeting, Rob Mitchell, did the appraisal fee go up on the homes close to the landfill as bad as they did other places? If they did, that's wrong. Cause those people are losing their quality of life. They can't do anything about their trash in their yards. The mud on the street that the man mentioned a while ago that could be addressed. A few years back, it was addressed. They put in a truck wash system to run every truck through it that entered in and out of BFI landfill. They quit using it cause they weren't made to. And I don't think you can make them do it now. Other than that, of course, I preached to y'all last month a long time. I'm not gonna stand up here this long tonight. But when we vote this, if you vote this through to core drill this property, to let Republic core drill this property, it's a step in the wrong direction. It's a step in the devastation of the rest of that community out there. And I asked you not to support the core drilling by BFI. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Well, I know this isn't the motion that might come if this motion fails like some of us hope it will. Because this, this motion to allow this is, is exactly like Commissioner Piercey said, it's a step in the direction of expanding Middle Point. And I made some notes because this is important. Uh, this is probably the most important time I've stood up here and talked in front of this commission in my sixteen years. The only thing that compares to it was when we argued about the ba, the Bible Park seven or eight years ago. And we fought, some of us fought for the Blackman community. Cause it was something that could have been good for the entire county, but bad for a community. Commissioner Kush, I thank the world of you, but last month you said, we gotta take a motion out of this. We got to look at what's good for the county as a whole. In my opinion, that is wrong. You don't throw a community under the bus for the good of the county. You don't sacrifice 20% of the county for the good of 80% of the county. If you start doing that, we've gone down a slippery slope. I've been, I spent fifteen years in the planning commission, went to continuing education every year. And I don't remember ever saying, don't worry about the surrounding community, vote for what's good for the county. We've never done that here. We've never done that a single time. We start doing that, we're headed towards socialism. That landfill was approved thirty-one years ago and Commissioner McAdoo backed me up on this on a trick. The county approved that because Eddie McCrary from over in Ledden County, he was gonna have a nice little community landfill and gonna help us out. Cause our landfill was filling up. And it got approved. And I know not only Commissioner McAdoo, but I know other people up here, they voted for it. Didn't think it's gonna be that big of a deal. He sold it immediately to BFI. And we've had that landfill out there for thirty-one years now, stinking up our communities, causing traffic, causing everything in the world. And we've been told constituents time and time and time again, we're sorry. We ain't do anything about it. Well, we're at a point right now, we can do something about it. If we don't, if we don't start this process toward expansion, we finally, after thirty-one years, got the ability to draw a line and say, and say, I hear you Walter Hill. I hear you North Murfreesboro. I hear you Last Castis. We can actually do something for you that we haven't been able to do in thirty years. You know, I mean, I made some notes here so I wouldn't forget something here because I, I'm very passionate about this. And you know, we would never approve that landfill. Our county would have never approved that landfill years ago. Or if it was still the farmland it was back then and they were coming to us today, BFI was to put a landfill right there, we were laughing in their faces. We want to put the biggest landfill in the southeast out there on Jefferson Pike and bring garbage from sixteen, eighteen municipalities to us. There's no way in the world it would even get across the desk of Doug Demossi at the planning department to be considered. Yeah, we're sitting there talking about extending it. And if we extend it now, there's debate over this, but we've got them, in other words, just say hemmed up. They're, they're, they're in a finite piece of property and we own the property beside it. But they own the property on the other side of it. If we allow them to go across our property twenty years from now and they're full, they've got the political power from all these other municipals, municipalities. Uh, you can't convince me they can't get approved. They keep on going. They go right across what we call the El Matthews property. Then they get to Richard Reeves' property where they're mining dirt now. And they keep on going. There could be a, potentially actually be a landfill there another hundred years. It could be the biggest landfill in the whole United States, if not the world. Do we want that in Rutherford County? This is actually, I'm not just sitting here saying this stuff. This is facts. This is scary stuff. We're, we're making a landmark decision here or starting on a path to a landmark decision for Rutherford County now if we allow this drilling. Cause by doing that, we're saying, we're okay to at least consider expansion of land, of the Middle Point two point oh. And these numbers tonight astounded me. I thought it was gonna be astronomical numbers, but to go to where we just haul it there where else, like everybody else doing, it's another dollar fourteen a month per household. Another thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents a year. Sign me up. I'll pay thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents a year to send it somewhere else. Let me keep on going down my list. And I apologize for talking so long, but I just tell you, I'm very passionate about this. And it just, you know, after all these years, I'll forget the list. But um, it's just the right thing to do. To let that landfill run its course and close it out. And yes, we've got to deal with the liability of the old landfill. We're gonna deal with that anyway. Let's just suck it up and take care of it. We, we started it. We built it. It's our problem. But we give it to them. We're gonna have a landfill for decades and decades more. Like I said last month, we're addicted, we're about like a bunch of drug addicts. We're addicted to free tipping. We're dipping to the money's coming from out there. We're just gonna get over it. If we did, if that landfill had never been approved, our solid waste budget would be exponentially higher than it is now for the last thirty years. And you've made that money off the backs of the people in northern Rutherford County. It's time to get off their backs and just suck it up and pay for what it costs to get rid of our garbage. It's gonna be ten years anyway, but we can at least start working in that direction. So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna beg you, vote against this motion tonight. And let's not move forward with this thing. And I've got a feeling our district two commission is gonna make another motion around for that to take this option completely off the table to expand Middle Point two point oh if we cannot do this. But it's just the right thing to do. Those people out there deserve it. Let's just do the right thing.
We're just gonna go down the line here. Maybe, maybe we can keep this going here. Right, there you go. The uh, the thing I wanted to bring up, and I brought this up last time, is nuclear waste. You know, we don't have control over a landfill when we approve it. Once it's approved, the state has control over the landfill. If we expand this, we have no control over the landfill. Our legislators, unbeknownst to us several years back, secretly allowed nuclear waste from nuclear sites that were being decommissioned to be hauled here. There was also agreements from countries in Europe to bring their nuclear waste to Rutherford County and dump it in our landfill. We don't have control over a landfill once we agree to it. Now, think about that real hard and think about what you want to be drinking for the rest of your life and your kids.
I too believe that if we approve the drilling, we're, we're headed down the path of expanding the landfill. And the, my constituents in the fourteenth district share some of the concerns you've already heard mentioned, such as concerns about the smell and it, the landfill being unsightly, trash on the highway, future liability, the truck traffic, and the diminished quality of life for the, the community. I want to share a few other perspectives that have to do with our budget because the landfill imposes those costs on our community, but it has a financial impact on our budget. And I want to try and put this in perspective, or at least this is my understanding of the landfill's financial impact on our budget. And I think it's, and my point is gonna be, I think the financial benefit is relatively small. That's where I'm going with this. There are two primary financial benefits. One is we get tipping fees when garbage is deposited in the landfill from other counties. And the second one is the city and county get to deposit trash in the landfill for free. The, the total value of this i- is a little bit less than four million dollars a year. I'm getting that information from this group's report. It's on one of the first or second fully typed pages. There's a footnote that says that the benefit is about four million dollars. And I believe that number's correct because I've heard something similar over the years. I've heard tipping fees of about nine hundred thousand. I've heard that it would cost us about um, another three million to haul our trash to another landfill. Now, part of that is a benefit to the county and part of that is a benefit to the city of Murfreesboro. So it's not a full four million dollar benefit to our county, only part of it. I'm gonna say half of it. So that, that'd be about two million dollars. But our county's budget, this last fiscal year, projected revenues of five hundred and forty-seven million dollars. So this two million dollar benefit to the county, again, in the form of tipping fees and being able to deposit our trash there for free, is, is less than half, half, less than half of one percent of our county's revenues. Actually, our county's appropriations in the most recent budget were five hundred and sixty-three million dollars. So again, even using that measure, the benefit of this landfill to the county is less than half of one percent. We are in the process of completing a judicial building that costs seventy-three million dollars. Rockville High School, about seventy million dollars. We've got a five-year education building plan. The five-year plan is, has an estimated cost of five hundred and eighty-six million dollars. This two million dollar benefit to our county is small relative to some of these other expenses. It's small relative to our revenue. It's small revenue to, relative to our appropriations. Now, the presentation we just saw did have some twenty-year cost projections. And I'm sure that takes into account price inflation and population growth. But I would imagine that our county's population growth would result in higher county revenue as well and higher county um, appropriations as well. So that this ratio would remain roughly constant over the, the twenty-year projection that the, that the expert provided. So it, it's my conclusion that the landfill imposes substantial costs on the communities in North Rutherford County. And you've heard what those costs are. And it's my opinion that the benefit, the financial benefit is small relative to the size of the county's budget. And it's my opinion that our county can afford to cap this landfill off, not expand and in a certain number of years, uh, no longer be accepting trash the way we are now. I think probably a landfill like we have would, would probably be, be more appropriate in a rural county that has a lower, a smaller population or a smaller population density, where that county can benefit from some of these revenue streams, but it won't impose such a large cost on the community just simply because there's not as many people there. Counties that have high density, high population densities uh, would not find a landfill like this to be appropriate. You wouldn't find a landfill like this in Davidson County or Knox County or Hamilton County. Cause there's a lot of people in those counties and it would impose a lot of costs on them. Thirty years ago, when this landfill was approved for Rutherford County, our population was a lot smaller. We are now a heavily populated county. I think we're the fifth most populated county in the state. And it's just not appropriate for a suburban county like ours to have this kind of a landfill. It's more appropriately located in a much lower population county. Uh, but I, I do want to conclude by saying it's, it's my opinion, we can afford, we can afford to cap this landfill off. We can afford not to expand.
Mr. Kush?
Good. All right. Will, thank you for recognizing me tonight. Maybe I'll get my name in the paper. I am running for reelection. So every, every, every press, press is good no matter what. Um, and hell, I vote tonight, if we vote, when I vote, it won't be because you changed my mind. Um, you asked about landfills in the area. In a twenty mile radius, approximately, there are four landfills. Smith County, DeKalb County, White County, and then one called Center Ridge landfill. Now, whether or not they want to take our trash, I don't know. Um, also too, you know, the big focus on the solid waste advisory that the mayor and I were on, the big, the big cost is trucking to Alabama where they have a waste of energy facility. Uh, when we build a transfer station, one or two, that trash would be consolidated, separated, recyclers, recyclables there. And that haul then is to Alabama. So that's where that real cost comes from, is, is the freight. Cause it costs money. And as fuel costs increase, that index is gonna go up. And Will, you're exactly right. The, these costings that we saw tonight, these estimates of, you know, two dollars and eighty cents or whatever, that, that is miniscule in the big picture. And I think any citizen in, in Rutherford County would be happy to pay for that. I think those, those numbers have left off a lot of things like land purchase. And it doesn't count recycling, which for those of us who pay in the city for private recycling pickup, I pay about fifteen dollars a month for that. So it wouldn't be that much, cause it would be incorporated in for curbside pickup. But if we're paying twenty now, we're probably gonna be paying thirty. And I would still gladly sign up for that to, I, I think that's a bargain. And, and Harvey said it, we have had a sweet deal for a long time. And really all I want to say is whether it's right now, three years from now, five years from now, the citizens of Rutherford County have had a free deal on waste. And it's gonna be time to pay. And I want you all to understand, it's gonna cost you money. Whether we build transfer stations and we do mandatory recycling, which we need to do, I don't think we're big enough to do waste of energy. Cause we don't have a partner big enough to absorb that energy. We don't, as a county, don't produce enough waste to fuel a monster waste to energy facility. We would have to have partners like other counties, which we're kinda trying to get away from anyway. We're, I think we've all decided, we're tired of other people coming into our house dumping trash here. So, and a waste of energy facility like we saw in Alabama, which is really cool, but that was a seven hundred million dollar bill. And you've got to have somebody to partner with that will take all that energy, whether it's electricity or steam. And right now, on a small scale, the county themselves would probably have to be that partner. Uh, so that's, that would be a tough challenge. That's something down the road, maybe as technology changes. So I'm a big fan of, of mandatory recycling. I'm a big fan of go ahead and start in the process of getting one transfer station built. And uh, I'm in agreement. It, it's time, and I'm just, I'm warning everybody again, it's time that we're gonna start paying to get our trash taken care of. It's an ugly business. Nobody likes to fool with it. It's not pretty, but we gotta do something with it. And it's time to start getting ready to pay money. And it's time to start getting ready to pay money for it. So, I'm glad Harvey came. Uh, I hope you all got some good out of that. We still have a lot of work ahead of us, all right? We have a lot of work. And remember, this is not just the county, this room. We have to get buy-in from every city in the county to make this thing work. So, thank you all very much.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question is, if we have 10 more years left on the life of this current arrangement with Middle Point, why are we going to be making decisions today and start spending a bunch of money on something if the landfill's still going to be open for 10 years? If we start building all these transfer stations and start paying extra money and hauling our trash away, the other counties are still going to continue to bring theirs in until the landfill is full. So I, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around why we'd need to do something now if we still have 10 more years left on the life of the landfill. And I'm all about good planning and thinking ahead, but, you know, 10 years is a lot different than five.
Well, I don't know the answer to that question, but I went out to the landfill a few days ago, and I don't see 10 years of life left in that one little small quadrant that's still, that's all they've got to fill up, so. But anyway, it started off, when we had this discussion, it was five to eight years. Somehow they've, someone has determined it may be as much as 10. So I don't think we should be thinking that's an absolute number. And with the growth that we're experiencing, certainly that, those number of years has got to diminish.
Well, I guess my question is, who is "they"? Because did, did Republic tell us it's 10 more years?
I think Republic made that number, yes. But we had earlier heard less years than that, for sure.
How can we verify or have a study done to show us how much time is left on the landfill with everything continuing?
They know how much is coming in every day, and they know how much airspace and volume is there, so their number should be easily computed.
Well, again, if it's 10 years down the road, I just don't see the need to be making decisions today, uh, in building these transfer stations and, and taking on more costs for our constituents when other people are going to continue to bring their trash here until the landfill's full.
Well, that's, that may be very well correct. But we're not making that decision today, whether we're going to build a transfer station or not.
Well, I understand, but it seems like we're moving toward making a decision. One was soon.
I think Mr. Gersman said it would be maybe two to five years to get a transfer station even built, so it may take a year or two. So this wouldn't be something we'd start tomorrow, even to build this, and you'd have plenty of time to think through all of this more carefully. More discussion.
Ms. Cook, please.
Ms. Cook.
I thought I could keep my mouth shut, but I can't. 1989, before BFI came in. BFI took, I think there was 10 or 12 of us to, to Lita, Ohio, and we saw their autoclave plant. And they sprayed an acid on it to make it decay quicker. Then we flew to Cincinnati and saw their burn plant. And we mentioned the, the smoke that was coming from it, and they said, "Well, we can put a, a filter up there to filter the smoke." Now, that's before BFI came into Rutherford County. That's before I became a commissioner. And under Mr. Manken, and there were several others, that they let BFI come in. And BFI, at that time, Commissioner McAdoo, you may help me on this, was not supposed to bring trash in from other states, especially New York. And New York ended up putting theirs in the, in the ocean at that time. So, part of this, we have been fighting ever since 1990, 1989, on the landfill for BFI. And they were not supposed to bring anything in at that time.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes, I've been agonized over this topic, and, uh, so I just wanted to share some of my thoughts. Ultimately, I cannot approve a decision that starts us down the path to expansion. And that's the thing that I've been convinced of in listening to constituents and so forth. So, Mr. Stevens, uh, I think the first topic at hand tonight is, do we start down the path to expansion? And those other items will come up to votes and discussions in the very near future. But the decision at hand tonight, I personally am opposed to, an avenue to expansion of the landfill in any way whatsoever.
One last.
Mr. Kusch.
One last comment. Commissioner P. last month brought up a question to Legal, and it was basically a recollection about maybe some verbiage, perhaps legal verbiage, about if, if an entity wanted to come and establish a landfill in Rutherford County, A, was that even possible anymore? Or, or for sure they had to have consent of the, of the full commission? And I, it's something like that, Robert, I, I think was your comment. And I'm, I guess I'm asking Legal if they've done any investigation. And then part B of my question is, if we, if we don't sell or don't allow Republic to, to get on our property or, or make a transaction with them, and they're bound by the river, I guess, right, on that one edge, i- is there a way that they can go around?
They're trapped.
They're, they're trapped, okay? So, it, could they, could they legally hop a property and establish a new landfill? Or would that require a brand-new permit? And that would basically be like starting a brand-new venture on a brand-new landfill, and that would be perhaps against county regi-
All right. Let me try to answer those. So there, um, the language used at the last meeting was the Jackson Law. And there is, in fact, a statute known as the Jackson Law, which, um, does address this topic. And in 2005, the county commission, um, adopted the Jackson Law to be applicable here in Rutherford County. And it does say that if there is going to be a new landfill constructed in the county, then there is a requirement for approval by the legislative body. There's some other stuff in there. There's, there's requirements for notice, there's a possibility of public hearing and some things like that, but it does basically mean, yes, you would have to approve it. In terms of, um, jumping, I'll answer that this way. Part of it, I think I can answer, and, and maybe Mac or Harvey can weigh in on this, but the way I understand the law is, it, it literally uses the term "new landfill." So I think normally, these landfills are given TDEC permits, and probably the, you're at, what you really need to know is, are we operating under the same permit number, I suspect, in what we're talking about? And my best, um, guess would be that if you are, if you have to get a new permit, it's probably a new landfill. Uh, but I couldn't be 100% certain of that, because I don't know exactly how those permits are assigned and whether or not there's some flexibility if you've got adjacent property to expand under a existing permit. Harvey may know, I don't know.
I think it would be a new permit.
Okay, so I think if it's a new permit, it's probably a new landfill, and they would not be able to do that.
Mr. Phillips.
I came in tonight, I've had a, a couple of commissioners ask me what I was going to do, actually, um, and my answer was actually kind of listen to the debate. I really didn't see a huge downside for that sampling to occur, want to know what's in there. Then I think about what I just said, because what I remember, I already know what's in there. My only concern tonight is, as we go through the closure process on our landfill, could the state require that type of sampling? And then we'd be in the same position that we're talking about. But after hearing, uh, s- some of the discussion, in essence, the debate tonight, okay? I think that's what debates are really for. And, uh, I've changed my mind. I shouldn't say I've changed my mind, but I've made up my mind, Joyce. Joyce and I were having some conversations before the meeting tonight about, uh, about what's happened in the past and what's going to be happening in the future. And, and I don't mean to reveal Joyce's age, but we've been around a while, and, and we know what's happened in the past. And you don't want to look at the past and see that there were mistakes made and make those same mistakes going to the future. And that's what's made up my mind tonight, in addition to the debates and some of the things that were brought up. Uh, I still have a concern about what's in there, but if the commissioners that are in the know feel comfortable with the capping of that and alleviating that superfund type of problem, I, I've made up my mind, uh, tonight, after asking questions and, and hearing the debates, that, uh, I think it's in the best interest of the county as, as a whole, not just, uh, the northern end of the county, but as the county of, as a whole, that we don't do that core drilling and go ahead with that, plans to close that, and then look at the other alternatives as to what we're going to do in the future with our waste. But I do appreciate the county, the mayor, and the consultants putting all that time and effort in, and we really need to utilize that report and go forward with some of those recommendations. Doesn't mean we have to do all of them, uh, but it does mean that I think we need to continue to focus, uh, on where we're going over the next five years. But I, I just wanted to say thank you, commissioners, for, uh, your well-prepared debate and information. And, uh, you've made me, you've made my choice a lot easier tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer.
It's my understanding that from last time, we have a motion on the floor, and we're just discussing it, okay? And that will get, that motion, if it's denied, will get rid of the core drilling by Republic. Well, then I call for question.
All right. Second. All of you in favor of calling for the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that question carried, please cast your votes.
Would you break the motion? Do you need to close it again?
Oh, I mean, did I break? The motion is to, uh-
Approve the access-
Approve the access agreement that, uh-
With the, with the-
BFI, that's, that's a simple language.
Access agreement with Republic.
Yes, the access agreement with Republic.
So if you want to stop that, you need to vote no at this point in time, correct?
If you're not in favor of that, allowing them to do that, you vote no. If you're in favor, you vote yes. So, please cast your votes.
How about some, yes on this last debate, I'm not wanting to take a no.
Joe Frank, Mr. Jordan, can, uh, can somebody?
Well, they all are cleared to simultaneously, I think. There you go.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Zero yes, 21 no, motion fails.
Al.
Mayor Burgess?
Yes. Commissioner Piercey.
Since we're on the roll of the landfill and all, and it seems like everybody seems to be kind of in agreeance on the merger, I would make the motion to deny any merger between our county landfill and the Republic.
Mr. Jordan, Mr. McAdoo.
Just, everything I said before, just think about what I said, just saying it right there.
Of course, the next commission could always change this if they so choose at some point in the future.
If we're here for five minutes.
Okay, is that motion clear? The motion is to deny making any mer- any merger consolidation with, uh, Republic or any succeeding, uh, entity, I suppose.
Motion, Bob. Piercey, Jordan, second.
Uh, eliminate the bill that controls the government and the options.
Oh, okay, and to, uh, take it from the options that have been presented to be considered, at least by this county commission, you're not in favor of even thinking about that in the future. Mr. Phillips.
Here I go again. I, I know this is a, a motion that probably most of us are going to support, but I would love to see this type of an idea go through committee and be fully discussed before it's, uh, before motions come to the floor. I would really prefer that to happen.
I support this motion. I agree with what the mayor said a few minutes ago. We could undo it next month, or the next commission could undo it in September or whatever. So this is, this is the feel-good moment. Give it to the people out there in Waltsville, you know? And they'll have to climb that hill to get, to get it back on the table, anyway.
Further discussion? Well, that's pretty obvious.
I'm just going to vote for raise.
All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
19 yes, 1 no, 1 abstain, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Well, that's a healthy, constructive discussion we've had, and I appreciate your, uh, participating. This is not the end of the journey. You have to still continue forward in some way to determine what this direction is, whether it's this year or next year, or two or three years, Mr. Stevens. It's, it's soon, sooner than later. It's such a difficult decision process. I just do want to make one sort of editorial comment. Both of our landfills are, already are kept, have been kept. Yes, now and then, they leak, and yes, now and then, we have to repair them, but that's, that's not the major difficulty. The major difficulty is what we can't see happening with this gas migration and stuff. So, we're in a position, and we will do it, we have to do it, we're required to do it. So, even though we have this so-called closure plan that's been approved, we have to adapt every month, every day to the changes that are occurring there that we don't know about. So, stand by, and I understand this, and it's our responsibility, but we will do our very best to continue to make the proper improvements to keep these things in full compliance, so that it doesn't impact our environment and our water, et cetera. Mrs. Allen.
I guess you kind of led it to my question, which is, what's next? Um, because I know, just as Commissioner Kusch said, there's a lot of work ahead of us. You know, one of the recommendations, um, that was presented today was that there needs to be a more citizen involvement, maybe a citizen advisory committee. Um, and you may not be prepared to answer that answer today, but do you have any, any thought along what's next? Because we do need to keep momentum, we do need to keep the conversation going.
Well, we, last time you approved the extension of the consultant contract, and that is still in play. If you want that process to continue and to continue the process of just determining how we're going to actually organize and undertake this study with a solid waste authority or otherwise, that discussion needs to continue. Now, from time to time, the, uh, consultant is not going to be able to start a task unless we instruct him to start a task. And then, one of the main things they've outlined there, as you've heard, is the solid waste authority as a potential organizational process to actually oversee where we go from here. So that, that's the next thing that's on the table to occur. Mr. Gurley.
Yes, it, my comments are kind of in the same line. Uh, I would, as I expressed previously, I would like to see more citizen involvement. I think the solid waste advisory committee need, needed more general citizen input to it. Also, uh, I'd like to see, before we approve a solid waste, uh, authority, I'd like to see that go to a referendum and let the citizens of this county decide how they want to proceed with wast- with waste disposal and waste management.
If there's no other comments or discussion about this, we'll continue on with the rest of our agenda. Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, Commissioner Gucht.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be as brief. I appreciate the landfill discussion. My bedtime is in 10 minutes. So, the steering has two resolutions for your consideration. One is to require the County Board of Equalization members and the County Board of Hearing Officers to complete an annual training, continuing education. Whereas the State of Tennessee, through its General Assembly, has mandated that the county legislative body shall, by resolution, establish a minimum of at least four hours of annual training for County Board of Equalization members and county hearing officers, and the minimum record-keeping requirements related to members' certificates of attendance. And whereas the General Assembly is passing Chapter 13 of the Public Acts of 2017, amended Tennessee Code Annotated 675403E, to provide that such mandatory training shall be a condition of appointment or continued service. And whereas the General Assembly, in passing Chapter 13 of the Public Acts of 2017, amended Tennessee Code Annotated 675403E, to provide that mandatory annual continuing education and training is only required to the extent that such education and training is provided by the Comptroller of the Treasury, free of charge. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session, that Section 1, as a condition of appointment or continued service, County Board of Equalization members and county hearing officers shall complete a minimum of four hours of annual training to include board governance, open meeting requirements, and other topics reasonably related to the duties of the members of the County Board of Equalization, and provided by the Comptroller of the Treasury. In Section 2, members' certificates of attendance shall be turned over to the assessor of property for preservation for a period of at least three years. In Section 3, this resolution shall be effective upon its passage and approval, the public welfare requiring it, resolve this the 12th day of April 2018. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Turner. Commissioner Schaefer?
Quick thing. What's free mean? Does that mean on the computer? Does that mean if you go to it, you get paid per diem? If you go to one of the meetings, like say, it's in Williamson County?
My assumption is that they're not going to charge you for it.
So, you could be out for it if you go somewhere, all your time.
Other questions? Okay, then, you ready to vote? All of you in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
And finally, we have a resolution to urge the General Assembly to support Senate Bill 2509 and House Bill 1958. Whereas the Register of Deeds were entitled to retain a 5% commission for collecting state taxes levied under TCA 674409 prior to 2006. And whereas in 2006, TCA 674409 was amended by Public Chapter 898, excuse me, 989, to provide that 52% of the Register's commission was to be retained by the state and credited to the State General Fund. And whereas Senate Bill 2509 and House Bill 1958 would restore the entire 5% commission to the Register of Deeds. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session, that the Tennessee General Assembly is strongly urged to support this legislation restoring the full 5% commission to the Register of Deeds. Be it further resolved, the county clerk shall mail certified copies of this resolution to the members of the Tennessee General Assembly, representing the citizens of Rutherford County, and send a copy to the Executive Director of the County Officials Association of Tennessee. Resolve this the 12th day of April 2018. Mr. Chair, I so move.
And the second, Commissioner Turner. And Mr. Johnson, any questions or discussions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Register of Deeds contacted me earlier, and she told me that this bill has been taken off notice up at the Capitol. However, she did want us to continue supporting this, and asked us if we would modify it a little bit, so that when it comes back next year, she can show that our county is in favor of this. So, I was going to offer an amendment to the motion to change Paragraph 3, to say, whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners supports restoring the entire 5% commission to the Register of Deeds, in Paragraph 4, removing the word "this," and then changing the title of our resolution to say, to urge the General Assembly to support restoring the full 5% commission to the Register of Deeds. This change will make it a generic resolution that just supports the concept of restoring that full 5% to the Register of Deeds, and it won't reference a specific bill, because next time, the bill number probably won't be the same. So, I'd make that as an amendment to the motion.
And have a second? And you have that written out, Mr. Stevens, so we can give that to Mr. Spence? Okay. All right, so it's not going to proceed any further this year. I think we sort of saw that coming. But we would like to get back our full 5%, which has been a lot of money. But it's a major amount of money that's going to be reducing the state budget, and they're pushing back pretty hard. All right, any other discussion on that? We'll first vote on the amendment. All of you in favor of that on the amendment, please say aye. All right, that passed. Now, we'll vote on the motion as amended. All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good night.
We're not quite through here. Let's see here. What's that?
I need those resolutions.
Oh, he needs a res... Now, under any other business, and I punched the wrong button here a while ago, but there is under that, we have one other item, and I don't have my printed update here, but in any event, it's a resolution authorizing a continuous four-year reappraisal cycle. That plan for that purpose, by state statute, every four years, the property assessor has to give the state division of property assessors a plan. And they have developed a plan, and I think we loaded the plan on your iPad, I'm pretty sure we did. It's a substantial 20-page document of some sort, but it goes through the detail of what they're going to do in this process, and how they're going to cover all these parcels that are out there in this timely fashion. So, Mr. Mitchell is here if you need to ask a question, but it's just about that simple. And they prepared this plan, and they're anxious for us to get this approved today. The state, sort of at the last minute, has said they need it by the day. So, that's where we are. So, we need a motion to approve Mr. Jordan and Mr. Schaefer. Here we go. There is a resolution that we have already prepared, but it's a second item on the other business, Lisa, so if you have that in open, that it says just what I sort of said there, and a few other additional words. All right. Is there any questions or discussions? We do have a motion, a second, on this resolution authorizing a continuous four-year reappraisal cycle that has been so defined. Yeah, we've got that covered. Everyone in favor of that, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, Lisa, hold on a moment here. Is there another resolution under other businesses?
No, that was planned under this resolution.
Okay, that's all it is. Okay. Is there any other business, in addition to this, to come before this body? Commissioner P.
Can't get out of here without talking about country ham. But Saturday, the 21st, schedule, volunteer fire department will be having a country ham breakfast. I wanted to invite all of y'all to come out for that. And two, while I've got the floor, I wanted to make the comment and thank Mr. Gersman, I believe I said that correctly, for his presentation. It was refreshing to hear straight answers from somebody. But thank you, Mr. Gersman.
Now, Commissioner P, is this ham breakfast this Saturday, or is it a week from Saturday? 21st, okay, that's what I thought. Just wanted to be sure about that. Commissioner Jordan?
I just want to remind everybody out there watching on TV, early voting is going on, go vote. I'm not on the ballot this year, so I can say that. So, you don't have an opportunity to vote for me. Don't come up here and complain if you're not going to vote. Everybody out there needs to vote. So, you can vote any of this, whatever broading, new system, and vote anywhere through early voting and all the way through Election Day. So, vote for whoever you want to, just make a point to vote.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Well, I thought Commissioner P and I were going to have ham breakfasts on the same day, but ours is this weekend on Gamble Lane in Laverne, right off the old Nashville Highway. So, you got two weeks, you can get it. Going to make you skinny, no calories in this country ham.
Mr. Reed?
What I'm talking about is where that ham comes from. This Saturday, at the Agriculture Center out here, we've got Adventures in Agriculture, where the Farm Bureau women are out there putting on a great exhibit, talking about how agriculture feeds us each and every day. It's an opportunity that if you have children or grandchildren, bring them out. Starts at 10 o'clock, it runs from 10 to 2 o'clock. There'll be all types of livestock out there, all types of exhibits, a lot of things for everybody to do and learn a little bit about agriculture in Rutherford County.
Commissioner Piercey?
I'd like to invite all of you to come out to the Las Casas Volunteer Fire Department Saturday afternoon from 2 to 8. Fish fry, chicken, dessert, drinks, come. It's a great place to campaign if you're running for office.
Now, Mr. P, Mr. Piercey, you said 2 to 8, is that correct?
Steven is just...
I thought it was 4.
Campaign.
Oh, yeah, it was such a big crowd last time, they couldn't get in there, could they? Commissioner Cook?
I want to represent the people in Laverne. They're talking about their property assessments. Some of them have doubled. They've gone up 55%. Some of them have 49 cents percent, is nearly all the city. And this comes from my constituents, also from the city hall. So, I told them I would represent them tonight. Thank you.
Well, the property assessments are what they are, but they can't appeal those, and then this group here will have the sheer joy of getting to set a tax rate, with all of that information to be seriously considered. Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, I too have gotten, heard about the tax things, valuation going up, but I've tried to assure people that that does not necessarily mean their taxes are going up. And I would just like to remind people that this is National Telecommunicator Week, and to remember those men and women that answer that phone when you dial 911. Hopefully, you won't have to, but people do it hundreds of times every day, and those men and women dutifully answer that phone, and many times, they incur situations that are very, very difficult. So, keep them in your thoughts, and if you know any of them, thank them this week.
Anything else anyone has? We are... Well, excuse me, Ms. Allen is not finished here. Thank... Excuse me.
On Saturday, Smyrna is hosting their Family Safety and Expo Preparedness, and it's at the Town Center, or the Event Center, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And you'll learn ways to keep your family safe. We've had a great turnout. It's a very kid-friendly event. Really encourage everybody to come out, and you also get a chance to meet your first responders. And so, we can never do enough to appreciate them, and of course, they're donating their time to be there. So, I'd encourage you guys to come out on Saturday.
All right. Without further ado, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.